Hey there. Want to make your voice heard at a Board of Supervisors meeting? We're all ears. Here's how you can get involved.
First, hop online and look at the agendas. This will give you the scoop on what's coming up before the Board. Each agenda item includes a brief description of the issue, the recommendations, and potential impacts. If you need more detail, check out the detailed reports online. Those are called "Board Letters." Then decide if you want to speak at Tuesday's General Legislative Session or Wednesday's Land Use Session.
You'll have three opportunities to have your say. Let's start with non-agenda public comment.
This is your chance to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but try and keep your topic related to county government. For non-agenda public comments, you can speak at either the Tuesday or Wednesday session, but not both. So pick your day accordingly.
And keep in mind, the Board can't act on the spot. They'll refer your comments to the Chief Administrative Officer, who will look into the issue.
Last thing. The Board will hear from the first 10 speakers, five in person and five by phone at the beginning of the session. Then all the remaining speakers will get their chance to speak after the discussion items. During the Consent Agenda, the Board handles a bunch of routine items with one vote. If you want to comment on an item, keep it simple. For example, "I'm John Doe, speaking on Item 5, and I agree with approving the contract." Discussion items are the main event where the Board debates before making a decision. Want to speak at one of the meetings? It's really easy. Just hop online and fill out a quick request form at publiccomment.sandieg county.gov. Pick the meeting you're interested in, hit the Register button, then fill in your details. Make sure to include a phone number if you plan on speaking by phone. Prefer speaking at the podium in the Board Chamber? No problem. Just pick the in-person option. After that, just check off the agenda items you want to talk about and let them know you're for, against, or neutral on them. Hit Register and you're good to go. A confirmation email will land in your inbox to wrap it up. If you're speaking by phone, the email will include the instructions for how to dial in. Be sure to submit your request early. Once public comment begins on the agenda item, we can't take any more requests to speak.
And if you have documents, hand them to the Deputy Clerk when it's your turn to speak at the podium.
Now, you get two minutes to speak, but if lots of people want to talk, it might get cut to one minute. So you might want to consider writing two sets of comments, one for two minutes, another one for one. That way, if time's cut, you won't be scrambling. There's also a countdown clock at the podium to keep you on track.
Once you're at the podium, stay on topic. Stick to the current agenda item. If you stray off-topic, you might get a gentle nudge to get back to the point. Keep your comments related to the agenda items' recommendations because that's what the Board is relying on to make a decision. Also, speak directly to the Board. They're the ones making the decision.
When your time's up, it's up. Overstaying might mean getting muted or even asked to leave. Now for some ground rules. For safety, keep aisles and doorways clear. If there isn't a seat, head across the hall to Room 302 or the fourth-floor balcony to watch the meeting. Respect is huge. Everyone should feel heard. That means you, other speakers, and the Board of Supervisors. Disruptive behavior gets one warning, and after that, a deputy sheriff might show you the door. So let's keep it respectful.
Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. Remember, we're all here to make a difference.
Good morning, good morning. I now call the November 4th, 2025 San Diego County Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting to order. We would like to take a moment to acknowledge the land we call home. There are communities in the San Diego region that face unjust conditions and circumstances related to the environments in which they live. The tribal nations of the San Diego region are an example of one community that has historically faced such injustices. We acknowledge the harmony that existed between the land, nature, and its original peoples who have since endured displacement, persecution, and systemic oppression. We pay our respect to the unceded territory and homelands of the 18 tribal nations in our region, the most in any county in the United States. We aspire to learn from indigenous traditional knowledge and experiences in undoing the injustices of the past. Andrew, please call the roll for today's session.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. Supervisor Anderson. Supervisor Desmond.
Here.
Chair Pro Tem Aguirre.
Here.
Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp.
Here.
Chair Lawson Reamer.
Here. Okay. We will now have Dr. Stan Rodriguez deliver the invocation, and Martin Arias will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please running -- please stand for the invocation and pledge.
And what I said, Creator, Your breath brings life into the universe. You are known by many names. We thank You for this day of life. We ask that You bless all the people who are here, the elected officials, whose job it is to take care of the people in this area. Bless them in their minds, in their hearts, in their bodies. Bless all the people who have come here for this time. And for the people of the Philippines. So, thank you. And for all the veterans for this month, thank you for your service.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We now proceed with the Proclamations. The first proclamation will be given by Chair Pro Tem Aguirre honoring Filipino-American veterans. Accepting the proclamation will be the Filipino-American Military Officers Association.
Great, good morning. Today, ahead of Veterans Day, I am honored to present -- to be presenting this proclamation in recognition of Filipino-American veterans. Across generations, from World War II to present-day military service, Filipino-Americans have served our nation with honor, courage, and distinction. Their story is uniquely one of sacrifice, perseverance, and patriotism. I especially want to recognize the Filipino-American military officers of San Diego Famos for preserving and honoring this proud legacy. Accepting this proclamation today is Chief Warrant Officer Ernesto LeWag, U.S. Navy retired famous treasurer and president of the Military Officers Association of America, Sweetwater Chapter, joined by Joanne Fields, representing Government Affairs and Public Relations for the Asian Pacific Islander Initiative. We are also honored to have with us honorary consul of the Republic of the Philippines, Audie Castro, whose leadership and service continue to strengthen the partnership between the Filipino community and the County of San Diego. We also would like to recognize Genevieve Fong from Representative Juan Vargas's office, who co-sponsored legislation to award World War II Filipino-American veterans the Congressional Gold Medal. During World War II, more than 250,000 Filipinos fought under the American flag, defending liberty in the Pacific. Many endured great hardship and loss, yet continued to serve with courage and devotion, even when denied the recognition and benefits they deserved. Their perseverance and that of their families stands as a powerful reminder of resilience, dedication, and shared history in the generations who followed. Historically, the majority of Filipino-American families in San Diego can trace its roots to U.S. military recruitment programs that opened the doors to immigration, which we know helped establish the vibrant Filipino-American community we know today. The families of Filipino-American veterans have shown remarkable resilience, supporting their loved ones through deployments and transitions while adapting to life in America. Here in our region, the city of Chula Vista made history with the creation of the Filipino-American Veterans Park, the first of its kind in the nation, a lasting tribute to their sacrifice and the enduring spirit of the Filipino-American community. Today, the County of San Diego proudly honors all Filipino-American veterans and their families for their contributions to our military, cultural, and civic life. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that Chairwoman Tara Lawson-Reamer and all members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors do hereby declare November 4th, 2025 to be Filipino-American Veterans Day, throughout San Diego County, commending Filipino-American veterans for their extraordinary service, leadership, and commitment to community and nation. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chief Warrant Officer Ernesto LeWag, U.S. Navy retired, a 26-year Navy veteran. I joined the U.S. Navy in April 1964 in the Philippines at the start of the Vietnam War. I am currently the president of MOA Sweetwater Chapter and treasurer of Filipino-American Military Officers Association, known as Famos. I also served, yes, 20 years in education, again, in public school for 20 years, San Diego Unified School District. First and foremost, I would like to give thanks to Supervisor Paloma Aguirre and all members of the Board of Supervisors for recognizing the contributions and sacrifices of Filipino-Americans who served in the United States Armed Forces with a county proclamation declaring November 4th, 2025 as Filipino-American Veterans Day. It is indeed a great honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of all Filipino-American veterans who gave so much in defense of our country to preserve our liberty and our way of life. Filipinos have a long history of serving the United States military, dating back to the turn of the 20th century, when the Philippines became a territory of the United States of America after the Spanish-American War. Our ancestors fought side by side with the Americans during World War II, and Filipino-Americans have served in the Korean War, Vietnam War, and more recently, in the Persian Gulf. My white father was a Bataan Death March survivor. In closing, I would like to express my deepest gratitude to this country for giving us the opportunity to live and prosper in the greatest country in the world. God thank you, and God bless the United States of America.
Good morning. My name is Joanne Fields, and I want to thank the Board of Supervisors and community for this honor to receive a proclamation that is naming our Filipino-American veterans here in the County of San Diego. According to the U.S. Census, there are over 217,000 Filipinos residing throughout the county. Many came by way of the military, but rarely do we hear that acknowledgement. But today, we're making history with the county and proclaiming this day to recognize our veterans and families. I'm a proud granddaughter of a Bataan Death March. My grandfather was in the Bataan Death March. My dad is retired Navy. My husband, retired Navy. My daughter is a veteran. So our whole family is military-connected. And I want to thank our families. Our family members stand behind our veterans. When you serve, we serve. And I appreciate the opportunity to give that recognition and, again, the whole community here in San Diego that has embraced us. But more importantly, today is the day that we finally get the recognition to remind our neighbors, our Filipino-American veterans, our families are here. And we want to continue to work side by side with you for the better quality of life of all San Diegans. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The second proclamation will be given by Supervisor Joel Anderson and Supervisor Jim Desmond honoring the Second Annual Disabled Veterans Resource Fair. Accepting the proclamation will be Martine Arias.
All right. Is this Martine? Good to see you. All right, good to see you. Thanks for being here. All right, hey, thank you, thank you. All right. Well, good morning. I'm happy here to be joined with County Supervisor Joel Anderson as well, honoring the Second Annual Disabled Veterans Resource Fair. And we want to thank everyone from our taxpayer associate, Martine Arias, along with a taxpayer advocate, from the County Assessor Jordan Marks office. Everybody's from the County Assessor's office. Thank you very much for being -- we appreciate you being here today. So there's a theme today with Veterans Day, which is, I'm glad to see with many of these proclamations. So as our nation prepares to celebrate Veterans Day, we proudly honor the brave men and women who selflessly defended our freedom. The Second Annual Disabled Veterans Resource Fair was held on October 22nd, and it was a resounding success, bringing together veterans, families, and community partners in a shared spirit of gratitude and support. So under the leadership of Assessor Jordan Marks and the Office of the Assessor/Recorder County Clerk, more than 20,000 local heroes have received over $30 million in property tax relief, recognizing their sacrifices and service to our nation. This event stands as both a heartfelt tribute and a vital resource hub, connecting veterans with the essential county, state, and nonprofit services, ensuring those who served receive the support and the respect that they earned. This Veterans Day and every day, we salute our heroes, and thank you for your service. Now I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you very much. And by the way, thank you for your service, Supervisor Desmond. Our supervisor served in the Navy and did an outstanding job, so we're pleased to have him here. The Second Annual Veteran Resource Fair builds on the support provided to veterans through Disabled Veterans Property Tax Exemption, ensuring that those who have sacrificed for our country receive the recognition and support they deserve. You know, I have to do a shout-out to our Assessor Jordan Marks. When he was the taxpayer advocate, he went out to the veterans' community and allowed people to understand this was a benefit they had earned but had not received. And the numbers grew under his tutelage there. And now, as the County Assessor, his staff has done an incredible job with this resource fair, bringing so many veterans the benefits that they so deserve. This event reflects the highest ideals of collaboration and gratitude, creating pathways for veterans to access resources and build community, and continue leading lives of purpose and dignity. I'd like to thank County Assessor Jordan Marks, his team, his fantastic team, I may add, and their participating community partners for their dedication to our veterans and to their leadership in bringing people together. I'm proud to join Supervisor Desmond in recognizing the Second Annual Disabled Veterans Resource Fair, and I'm going to read the last paragraph of the proclamation. Be it proclaimed by all members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this fourth day of November 2025 that they commend the Office of Jordan Z. Marks, Assessor/Recorder County Clerk, for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County. And do hereby declare this day to be Second Annual Disabled Veterans Resource Fair Day throughout San Diego County. Outstanding work, gentlemen and ladies.
Good morning, and thank you Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Anderson, and Supervisor Montgomery. You had a booth there at our event, and so thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Assessor/Recorder County Clerk, Jordan Marks. My name is Martine Arias, and I am the taxpayer advocate for the Assessor/Recorder County Clerk, Jordan Marks. Today, joining me is Chief Deputy Brooke Hill, Division Chief Robert Gomez, and Assistant Division Chief Cassandra Correa, who oversees the Disabled Veterans Fair. On my team is Xander Ramirez and Andrew Harvey. On Wednesday, October 22nd, we hosted our Second Annual Disabled Veterans Resource Fair that welcomed over 1,000 attendees. This was our way of saying thank you to the disabled veterans and surviving spouses that have served our countries. It was an incredible day of connection, services, and collaboration for our veterans and their families. Also, they love the free haircuts and tax savings. I did not partake, by the way. When Assessor Marks started in the office as taxpayer advocate in 2017, there were only 4,500 qualified Disabled Veterans exemptions, resulting in about a $7 million savings to them. This year, because of this great team, we are proud to have qualified over 20,000 Disabled Veterans, resulting in over $35 million in tax savings to our veterans. As Veterans Day approaches on November 11th, we look forward to continuing to support and serve those who have served our country. Thank you again on behalf of ARCC, Jordan Marks, and our entire team. It is our true honor to serve, and Happy Veterans Day.
Okay. The final proclamation will be given by Supervisor Desmond honoring the 250th anniversary of the United States Marines and United States Navy. Accepting the proclamation will be Colonel Daniel Whitley.
Colonel. Good morning, sir. Good to see you as well. It's great. We have three proclamations concerning veterans here with Veterans Day rapidly approaching. And I do want to say thank you to the Filipino group that was here. I served, went to the Philippines. The Navy took me over on an aircraft carrier to the Philippines. It was great, and I worked with many, many Filipino-proud veterans and people who served and stepped up. And just one thing I'll mention here. Myself, I'm a Navy veteran, as Supervisor Anderson had mentioned, but you know, when you sign up for a job, and you go get a job, you go through an interview, and you sign, you know, sign up and get the job, there's only one job in the world where you say, "I will give my life for this job, for this country." You don't see that many or any other places, but you sign on the dotted line. You're willing to give your life for the country. And for that, veterans who did that, people who fought, I never fought in combat or anything like that, but for the ones who did and gave their all, we really need, for their respect, but all the veterans that served coming up here on November 11th. So as we approach Veterans Day, we want to proudly salute everyone who has worn the uniform of our great nation, our heroes, our defenders, and our veterans. But today, we also celebrate two extraordinary milestones. It's the 250th birthday of the United States Navy and the 200th. It's the 250th birthday of the United States Navy and the 250th birthday of the United States Marine Corps. Any Marines in the audience? No, just one? Oh, got one, okay. All right. I was looking for a group ooh-rah, but no, I guess not. Anyway, for those 250 years, these proud branches have stood together side by side protecting freedom across the globe. I'm a Navy veteran, and it's my honor to welcome Colonel Dan Whitley, retired, from the Marine Corps Base Camp Pendleton. Colonel Whitley was actually the liaison for Camp Pendleton, working with all the different communities in Oceanside and Vista and San Marcos, all of the communities in North County, and he was a great advocate and always helpful and great to be around. But I want to thank you for joining us here this morning, and thank you for your dedicated service to our nation and our leadership in upholding the finest traditions of the Marine Corps. This is a special occasion that reminds us of the enduring values of honor, courage, and commitment. And over the centuries, Marines and sailors have fought on distant shores and in desperate battles, earning the reputation for discipline, toughness, and valor. They secured liberty, they defended our allies, and carried forward the promise of a free nation and a free world. The 40,000 or so Marines that are stationed at Marine Corps Base Camp Pendleton, this is the nation's premier amphibious training venue. They are the heirs of that legacy and stand ready right now to defend our nation. And we want to honor all veterans who call San Diego home. Luckily, when I got out of the Navy, I grew up in the Midwest, when I got out of the Navy, I saw San Diego, I says, "I'm staying here, I'm not going back to the cornfields." But, so, there's just many, many veterans here, and we want to make sure that they all feel welcomed and privileged and honored to be living here in San Diego County. So the United States Navy, whose partnership with the Marine Corps has been forged in every conflict since 1775, and continues to provide the strength, mobility, and global reach essential for our nation's defense, ensuring that the Marines can bring the fight wherever freedom is threatened. So whereas the county of San Diego were proud to recognize and honor two U.S. branches of the military that exemplify the highest ideals of public service, the United States Marine Corps and the United States Navy are both worthy branches. So therefore, be it proclaimed by myself and all the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this fourth day of November 2025, that we commend the United States Marine Corps and the United States Navy for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens, not only of our country, but to San Diego County and the entire nation, and do hereby declare this day to be the 250th birthday of the United States Marine Corps and United States Navy throughout San Diego County. May God bless America. Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Colonel Whitley to make a few remarks. Retired, how many years did you put in?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven-year Marine Corps. And you didn't shave this morning.
I did not.
Okay. Go ahead, Colonel. Sorry.
Well, Jim, thanks for those kind remarks, and Jim and I have enjoyed a very productive relationship for the last several years, both in uniform and out. I'm still the community liaison for the base, I'm just now a civilian Marine, and despite the government's inefficiencies lately, the Marine Corps is fully up and operational. Some of us even chose to work without pay. So I'm not sure that's the smartest decision, Jim, but I'm here to serve. General Nick Brown would be here, he sends his condolences, but with the shutdown, there's certain things we're frowned upon right now, so he's not here to accept this, so I am accepting this as a Marine Corps of One, retired Marine, accepting this on behalf of the 40,000 Marines at Camp Pendleton. Like was stated by Jim, I've had the fortune of serving for over 27 years in combat, in peace, et cetera, and I could tell you, if you saw what your young Marines do every day, it is awesome. Especially when you watch what those young Marines do when they're in harm's way, under some of the most trying circumstances, it is awe-inspiring. And I would tell you, they do it not out of hate, because the enemy, they hate us, they do it out of love. They do it out of love for the country, love for their family and friends that they're defending, and most importantly, love for each other, and that's why we will have a Marine Corps for the next 250 years. So Jim, I appreciate the relationship. I look at our communities, especially Oceanside, right outside the gate is us, we're just a gated community of Oceanside. So I try to be transparent, open, candid with our local neighbors as possible, because we need you as much as you need us. So Jim, I thank you for this relationship.
Thank you, Colonel. Appreciate it. Congratulations.
Thank you all. Thank you, Colonel Whitley. And also, I just want to say thank you Supervisor Desmond for bringing this proclamation. As I think most folks know, my grandpa was stationed at Camp Pendleton and was killed at Chosen, so this means a lot to me as well. So thank you very much. Okay, so moving on, I just want to make a statement on discrimination and speaker rules. Public engagement is the cornerstone of transparent and accountable government, and these Board of Supervisor meetings are one of the primary venues where all San Diegans can make their voices heard. The county is committed to a work environment free from unlawful discrimination and harassment, including sexual, racial, religious, age, disability, and any other form of discrimination. Under the board's rules, speakers are not allowed to use loud, slandering, loud, shouting, threatening, impertinent, slanderous, profane, or abusive language to any members of the board, staff, or general public. Additionally, all remarks and questions must remain on topic during the duration of your speaking time and must be addressed to the board and not to county staff. Any speaker who engages in comments that break these rules will be issued a warning. After one warning, you will be asked to leave the chamber for the rest of the meeting. Finally, speaker starting violence may be reported to law enforcement and removed from the meeting. This is a space for community engagement, deliberation, and progress, not for harassment, violence, or hate. So we now proceed with non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on subject matters within the board's jurisdiction, but not an item on today's meeting agenda. The only action the board may take is a referral to the CAO. Under the board's rules, speakers can speak once per meeting, either today's general session or tomorrow's land-leave session, but not both sessions. You may select which session to address at your convenience. For non-agenda public comment, we will have five speakers in person, five speakers by phone at the beginning of the meeting, and the first five speakers will be randomly selected. The remainder of non-agenda public comment will be heard at the close of today's session. Additionally, in accordance with board rules, in order to ensure timely completion of today's agenda, for all discussion items with 10 or more speakers, individuals will have one minute to share their opinion. As a reminder, according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English speaking and need interpretation assistance receive twice the allotted time for their comments. A final reminder, according to the board's rules of procedures, audience members shall not whistle, clap, stomp feet, or do anything that disrupts the proceedings. If you disrupt the meeting, you will be given one warning. If you disobey any of our other rules, you will be given one warning. After that warning, you will be directed to leave the chamber for the remainder of the meeting. Andrew, please call the speakers.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 19 requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, eight individuals in person, and 11 requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We will begin with the in-person speakers, and will now randomly select the first five speakers in person. All the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have two minutes to address the board, and we'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, allegedly Audra, Marina Boom, Jennifer Royston, and will be followed by Purita Javier and Caesar Javier. If I've called your name, please come forward. And you're welcome to come forward in any order if I've called your name.
Good morning. I'm Purita Javier. We live in fear from ceramics count toxicity since 1997. My doctor declared that anxiety has contributed to increased forgetfulness and elevated blood pressure compounded by moderate late onset Alzheimer's dementia. And on September 16, 2025, my sharp ENT doctor declared my hearing lost, left ear and right one very weak. County aging and independent services of health and human services has involved in ensuring my health and safety. We asked help from the city of San Diego since June 2021, starting with 9/11 fire hazmat code enforcement, city attorney, council members, and the mayor, and the chief of police, no response but inaction. And meetings, they recorded it, but never, never informational or subject for discussion.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
That's your discipline. I am Caesar Javier, family of soldiers. Thank you for recognition, for the recognition. Senior with existing medical condition, and also victim of this next door's home business since 1997. But the business started 1984. I do not know how the owner cheated our city treasurer's office. Children knows the solution. This is a promotional calendar, it says here, grade five, grade seven, they know how to fight pollution. Can we? We are not children. We began voicing our concern to possible lawful authority, GOS and NGOs. Mommy Steve, I think you know this, we voted for you with all hope that you will do something for this. Giving us this air purity fire, well, thank you, but this is not the true solution. We have to dig up, and we found out that the solution is policy change. When APCD got independence from the county, they carried the vintage rulings, Rule 10, Rule 11, and other rules. And with reasons, we believe that APCD is not working according to the mandate of the Constitution. It is working like a business, money, 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 money. The mission of the staff is to ensure that there is permit, money. The mission of the governing board members takes charge of the rule. What rule?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Marina Boom, and I'm the mother of 27-years-old daughter with severe mental illness. She has been under the care of San Diego County Behavioral Health System ever since she lost her job in 2021. In just five years, in just five years, I watched a UCSD graduate and working professional deteriorate into homelessness right in front of my eyes. I had to play detective to try to locate her. She was just going with her brain, and she was giving choice, a freedom of choice. I'm going to be very short. We went to, I called everywhere, MCRT, 988, police, various programs in San Diego County. I was told to kick her out and let her hit rock button, or she must want to get help on her own, or that she was just misbehaving. Yes, my daughter is an adult, but by the time her broken inside made it possible to choose help, it got a little too late. She needed more advocacy than just her ill brain. Concerned by two and a half years of escalation without a progress, I kept calling and calling and searching and learning. I learned about Laura's Law. Laura's Law was a young professional who was killed by a patient with severe mental illness she was trying to help to. I called the AOT telecare. I was, we were, my daughter was admitted to I-HOT program twice. On the second round, she was a candidate for AOT program that is based on Laura's Law, that is funded by Laura's Law. To, despite AOT being the gatekeeper for Laura's Law, even with severity of my daughter's condition, and with me asking multiple times, they did not submit a petition Laura's Law.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Jennifer Royston, allegedly Audra. Not seeing those individuals, I'll call two additional speakers on the list, Paul Dunlap and Mark.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Paul Dunlap. I'm the CEO of For Better Brains, small nonprofit in San Diego County. I take this time with great respect, and once again, want to describe what we're out, what we're looking to do as far as a nonprofit. We are on the streets, in the trenches, in the bushes, along the freeway, along the railroad tracks, seeing all the people that are suffering from homelessness. We're doing our own research, finding out that over 41% of the people that we approach are suffering from mental illness, whether they were, lost their home, like the last speaker, through mental illness, or developed mental illness while they were homeless. As we look at Agenda Item 13, I will not speak about that, but I just want to point out that as these laws are passed by citizens, as the laws are handed down by the state, there are always funding resources, there are always funding issues. As you look at, you know, from my background experience, I just ask you to take a look at the way that all the different programs in the county are funded, take a look at how telecare is funded, take a look at the amount of staff that are administrating that telecare program, take a look at how SB 43 has been implemented. We're in month 11 of that implementation. As we all know, and as you all know, homelessness, veterans, disabled veterans, mental illness, severe substance use disorder is all interconnected. I appreciate from a positive standpoint what the board has done so far in creating beds, in the funding for the beds. I really appreciate what the board has done so far in recognizing that the staff that are, that are working those beds, that are providing the care are of utmost importance. And I once again ask for your review of how SB 43 has been implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark, I advocate for peace toward everyone. Brown Act 54954.3C, I have the right to critique omissions. You supervisors have neglected to point out the problems this board is tasked with, cannot be solved without addressing these systematic problems. Wealth inequality in America. Harvard Business Professor did this study. Nine have, 10 Democrats and Republicans want this wealth distribution curve, which we do not have. See these YouTube video titles. Also see USDebtClock.org. National debt is approaching $38 trillion. Government shutdown is a fact, not a conspiracy theory. Unsustainable, caused by Federal Reserve. Interest on US debt is more than we spend on anything else, including defense. Thomas Jefferson quote, "If the American people ever allow private banks to control the issue of their money, first by inflation and then by deflation, the banks and corporations that will grow up around them will deprive the people of their property until their children will wake up homeless." will wake up homeless on the continent their fathers conquered," end quote. You're witnessing this in real time, and the support's policy is to mitigate the homeless that inflation has caused. Newsom is a young global leader for the World Economic Forum, which is a foreign organization. He must not be allowed in government, and his supervisor's sworn oath of office to oppose him. Forcing the middle class to subsidize low income housing instead of stopping inflation is destroying our state and country. Everywhere Newsom forces his mixed-use low-income buildings, we, the people in each area, oppose them. Newsom ignores the will of the people, so his policies are tyrannical by definition. You supervisors are sworn to oppose him and his foreign WEF policies. Instead, you have neglected your oath of office. And finally, general AI will destroy us if it is created. Narrow AI could be used to help people in the workplace. Instead, it is planned to replace people and destroy our economy. The phrase "by 2030, you shall own nothing and be happy" is from an essay by Ida Hocken, which was on the World Economic Forum's website. You will not be happy, as the WEF corporations own everything you need to live while you live like us.
See Rosa Corey from 3 minutes 30 seconds. See Zeitgeist.
Thank you. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. Again, in accordance with the board's rules, we'll hear from the first five callers. The remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We'll begin with our first caller.
Dambler, my name is Justin James Castro. I hope you read that letter because I'm completely and utterly serious. You have violated multiple constitutional rights. You also extended a restraining order without giving me a chance to go ahead and defend myself against that. Then you applied it and thrown me in jail for three days. You understand by not addressing my concerns about election security, by, I have laid it out flat, I have pointed out every single problem that I have seen, and I pointed that out to Michael Lu when I was working there. He made my life a living hell for four years before I was fired over calculators that you guys never ordered. Then I was put on hold for seven friggin' years. Well, you guys went ahead and played friggin' games with me, and then you get pissed off at me for calling you names. I have the right to go ahead and do that. You work for me, I don't work for you. So if you want me to go ahead and use the law to go against you, like you have abused the law to go against me, then I will do that. I have, I have shown you the documentation that I can go ahead and do, and I showed you how much money I can go ahead and make. If you want to go ahead and press this, what I'm asking you to do right this fucking second is apologize to me and retract that restraining order and retract the fact that you tried to throw me in jail for calling you names, or whatever the hell-
Just a reminder, please confine your remarks to items within the board's jurisdiction. I said, did we hear? Just a reminder to please confine your remarks to subject matters within the board's jurisdiction. Your beginning remarks were relevant because it concerned elections, which obviously is something that the county does manage, but your later remarks are not, so please continue to focus your remarks on subject matter within the board's jurisdiction.
Okay, the county of San Diego has been silencing me for 1,835 days of exposing election fraud issues in order for them to push their agendas onto the people. They have abused their rights, they have, you know, and-
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Good morning, board of supervisors. The rise of incidence of fatal vehicle accidents involving drivers who test positive for THC underscores the urgent need for stronger regulations surrounding marijuana use and road safety. As the marijuana industry expands their market, so does the risk of impaired driving. It is a public safety concern that cannot be ignored. Sandag Substance Use Monitoring Project, it interviews individuals who have been booked into the county jail to better understand their substance use. The findings show that 61% report that they did not believe that driving under the influence of marijuana impaired their driving ability. The gap was even wider among juveniles, with 75% did not believe driving under the influence of the effects of marijuana affected their driving performance. Together, these findings highlight a disconnect between reported behavior and perceived risk of marijuana use and driving. As we know, research shows that THC significantly impairs motor skills, reaction time, cognitive functions, leading to dangerous driving conditions. We need to maximize prevention effectiveness. This lack of prevention education has serious implications for the health equity of our community. Ultimately, prioritizing road safety through robust marijuana regulations is essential to protect lives. We must act decisively to ensure that our roads maintain safe, are safe for everyone. Let us advocate for policies that address this growing concern and foster a safe driver environment for everyone. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
So government used the Filipinos, just as they use many other underprivileged demographics. They didn't care about them then, and they still are exploiting them now. They say we live in the land of the free. What freedom is left when every aspect of our life is monitored, taxed, and dictated? The harsh truth is we've been mistaken obedience for freedom and distraction for peace. We're still bound by the same system that owns our time, our labor, and our minds. It's becoming harder and harder to ignore the hypocrisy, the hypocrisy playing out in front of us. We live in a time where corruption is no longer hidden, it's performed openly, and yet most people remain silent. Why? Because society has been systematically dumbed down, distracted, and conditioned to accept the unacceptable. People have been taught to feel powerless, to believe their voice doesn't matter, and to look to the same system that created the problems for solutions. This isn't by accident, this is the design. When people lose their critical thinking, when they forget their worth and their innate authority, the few in power have free rein to do whatever the fuck they please and call it governance. We're told this board and every board that exists to serve the people. We're told about, yeah, we're told about that. But the truth is, many have become political puppets serving hidden agendas under the illusion of public service. The policies, the projects, the partnerships, they're all part of the same theater. And the silver lining is, they need us more than we need them. This entire system only functions because we comply, because we consent, because we forget our power. The reality is, we don't need them at all. We've just been programmed to think we do. So today, I'm asking those who are listening to remember, wake up to the smoke and mirrors, question everything, stand in your own authority, because the truth is simple, the moment we remember who we are, their control ends.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Paul Bo, flip the fun and impersonant language as you use that and restore my time, Tara. At the last meeting, you took about two and two-thirds hours for 16 items, but almost four hours for just five items. You had to push closed sessions to Wednesday at the last minute. That is why you need to start preparing items earlier, schedule better between the two sessions, and not include half-baked ideas that you haven't already researched adequately. Also, this would oil publication potentially earlier than the previous Wednesday, as promised in Agenda 8 on September 30th. You also need to start putting links to more documents in the agenda, every ordinance, contract, and presentation mentioned in the agenda item. Recent lawsuits, and especially the one today, make it clear that departments such as child welfare services, and I think all departments, need to be audited regularly and independently. It appears that your own internal audits are not controlling the situation. It seems that you have a number of employees who are passing this over, wasting money, creating legal expense and reputational damage for us and you. And medically speaking, you need to start acting for the whole county, not just putting vital services like hospitals in the western half of the county. I mean, it's really pathetic how few medical and emergency services East County has, you know? The people get sick or whatever, I mean, no wonder they have a-
Thank you. We'll hear from the final caller this morning.
Hey, there's truth, I think Tara would have a better chance on Hinge if she would just wear something pink like her mom tells her to. Now let's talk about one of the phoniest, most arrogant, and heartless entities in office, right down there in hell with Tara Shon Alos. I'm talking about Manuela Paloma Aguirre Bakowski, of course, the piece of sewage who laughed at homelessness at the October 24 Sandag meeting. You have the wrong place for this evil entity on July 22nd, wasted $782 on invitations and envelopes by DeFrance Printing, $148 on a food permit for El Tapatio, $593 on flowers delivered by Florentia Floral, $9,237 on catering by El Tapatio, $328 for interpretation services by IU Group, $98 by Raphael Party Pringles with an unsigned contract, $3,784 for AV equipment, gear, and labor by Vario, $800 for Mariah Chi's Nueva Tradición, who are worth more than that, $775 for photography by Creative Keepsakes, and $233 for janitorial services by DMS Facility Services. All of this costs a total of $16,786.95 of RACAC dollars wasted on somebody completely undeserving, especially when Manuela owes the county $2,600 in property taxes. Present say to that, did you change your IB mayor license plate yet? I suggest LBROWND for Labor Owned. Here's yet another heartless entity, Rachel Borelli, the Assistant Director of the Department of Animal Services.
All bad, they don't euthanize anything, even if the dog's fucking bit a kid. So that's why I was like euthanize the dog. Like, I'm so sick of us keeping shit dogs that aren't gonna get adopted. That's why we're overcrowded. Call me heartless, but I'm also realistic. Euthanize the dog. I'm so sick of us keeping shit dogs, shit dogs.
Ironically, unwarranted euthanases are something Deborah Berkeley and Rachel Borelli have in common, all heartless people.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes requests for non-agenda public communication this morning. Again, all the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
Okay, thank you all very much. So the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes and statements of proceedings for the general legislative session of October 21 and 22. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Thank you very much. Andrew, please call the vote.
Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We now proceed with the formation of the consent agenda, currently listed as items one through nine. And I would also like to move discussion item 18 to the consent agenda. And for some context for folks, item 18 was placed on the Tuesday agenda as a discussion item, but all the other subset items are routine and were placed on the consent agenda. And item 18 is also routine and non-controversial. It would have normally been on the Wednesday docket, but it inadvertently got placed on the Tuesday docket, so here we are. So we'd like to include item 18 on consent. So that would be the, for, the consent agenda currently would be items one through nine, as well as item 18. Individuals can comment on consent agenda after supervisors pull any items they would like for discussion. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items or comments on anything on the consent agenda? Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp.
No need to pull any items, I will move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Montgomery Stapp, Chair Porta McGarry.
I have one, I have a second.
Okay, we have a second by Chair Porta McGarry. Supervisor Anderson?
No, it's time, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Desmond?
Nothing to pull, but I would like to comment on item five briefly. This is accepting a land donation from the Wright family in Borrego Springs. So the county has been offered a generous land donation by the Wright family of Borrego. This item would give staff the authority to negotiate and accept the six acres of adjacent land next to the existing county complex in Borrego Springs. So these six acres have been, have been offered to the county for a site for a future Borrego Springs fire station and a site for a potential health clinic which could be operated by a third party. The current Borrego Springs Station number 60 is outdated, and they operate on a former lumberyard site. Today's item brings the county one step closer to provide her better fire response and protection for the Borrego Springs community. I want to thank staff very much for all your help and work on this and working with the Wright family for making this board item possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we can go to public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 12 requests to speak on the side, on the items on the consent agenda, four in person and eight requesting to speak by phone. Again, as a reminder, item 18 was moved to the consent agenda, so if you have comments on that item, you can make your comments during the, your comments on the other items in the consent agenda. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. For any individuals that requested to speak on the consent agenda by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. For the in-person speakers, as your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have two minutes to address the board. We'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. Also, when speaking, please identify which items or items on the consent agenda you are speaking about. I'd like to invite forward, allegedly Audra, Cesar Javier, Mark, and Ted Miyaara. If you've called your name, please come forward.
Mark, item three, a strategic plan for the support and improvement of early care, education, and development systems for children and families. Now you two can receive behavioral screening services and home visitation services to targeted populations. Translation, government is going to make money counseling or drugging your children, whether you like it or not. Their strategic partnerships might even take your child from you. Here's a quote from first five San Diego strategic plan. "As we look to the emerging future, our declining revenue calls for us to consider a greater strategic focus on our investments," end quote. Item seven, A-26, responsibilities and duties of the chairperson and vice chairperson of San Diego County Board of Supervisors, supporting and implementing measures that closely align with their strategic plan. Creating homes for all of us, protecting and enrich every neighborhood, advance mobility and infrastructure, champion sustainability, foster regional prosperity. Inflation must be stopped and wealth distribution curve like we had around 1955 to do any of these, and this board never mentions that fact. All these lies are UN Agenda 21 and UN Agenda 2030 goals to completely enslave us. Example given, 46 million invested in 10 projects citywide, 900 affordable units, they're proud of that. As of October 15, 2025, there are 134,537 low-income renter households in San Diego County that do not have access to affordable housing, and this board has only helped 10% of them. Item four, there's nothing here to show us the proposed changes to board policy A-99 and board policy A-133. This is communism and fascism to control us, and we must peacefully change this.
Everyone see these videos? See Zeitgeist from 6 minutes 40 seconds to 24 minutes, and Rosa Corey, and Resilience sees from 5 minutes 28 seconds.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
[inaudible][1782.61]
Caesar Javier and my wife, Purita Javier. We would like to optimize our participation. I am going to speak on all these items in a general context. You see, we have been engaged with the county at the operation area, and we learned that the county has four departments. And in the agenda, consent agenda, it, uh, listed, uh, public safety, uh, human services, uh, finance, and we missed something. The loose. I do not know if I pronounced it well. Land use, environmental group. It's very clear. We are shortfall of one rule crafting, rule implementing, which is to be, you know, reviewed along with these three departments, uh, tasking. Try to look at it. This is in our constitution. Working together, justice for the rich and poor, domestic tranquility, defense, protection from the outside enemy, and of course, inside enemy. And lastly, it says there posterity and patrimony. Did I forget one or two? Oh, public welfare. These are the things that we had to craft, review, exercise, practice for the survival of San Diegans. That's the point. And that's what we are here. We are here to participate. Without us, this is not a governance. We are here to help one another. Madam Steep, are you helping us?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. Ted Mihara with San Diego Community Housing Corporation. I'm here in support of item number eight, which is a bond issuance for Brookview Senior Villas. Uh, I'm just here to say thank you. Uh, this is a project that is funded by the County of San Diego. Um, you're providing a total of $7.8 million in funding. That's composed of $5 million in home, home ARP and PIP funds, as well as $2.8 million from No Place Like Home. We're targeting folks earning between 20 and 40% of the area median income. 12 of those units will be for, uh, folks experiencing homelessness. Please continue to fund affordable housing. Uh, I can't express enough how important the Innovative Housing Trust Fund is. This project is not funded by that, but, um, having been part of other developments that have that money, it's extremely impactful. Uh, again, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Bet you guys were stoked. You thought I wasn't here. I know. Yeah. So anything you're doing with Health and Human Services and children should not be happening because you have child traffickers over here that are hiding sexual abuse with people in their care, and they are terminating families because it's a for-profit business. So anything that you guys have to do with that, you should absolutely not because you are engaging in obstruction of justice right now, and it's very disturbing because it is a very well-funded agenda to take children from their families, from loving families, and put them through behavioral health therapy. And these children in the care, in the county with caregivers are actually showing signs of abuse when they change their behavior in front of their caregiver.
Pause the speaker's time. Sure. Um, Andre, can you just clarify for me which consent item you're speaking to? Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. See, it's things like this where you're trying to stop and impede justice and for really making sure that children are being taken care of, and people like Kimberly over there aren't signing off on fraud, fraudulent things being put into records that your caseworkers that work under you and Alfredo are lying in reports. And they refuse to allow me to testify about a little girl, Malika Robinson, who reported sexual abuse and an individual. But I guess I haven't spent enough time with the children, right? That's not enough time. Or is it too much time? Hmm? You want to shake your head, but you know what I'm talking about. You sign off on these reports.
Please pause for time.
And my name is in them.
Just a reminder to please speak to the board and not to the staff.
Aye.
Andre, you said.
I have a kink in my neck.
You were, you said you and you looked at Kim. So, and you said you. So this is your first warning? Thank you.
You're welcome. You need to do something because you know what I'm talking about. I shouldn't have to report it time and time and time again.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted and you'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We will start with our first caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Madison and I'm speaking to item three in support for the ordinance amending Article 3P related to the First Five Commission of San Diego. This item may appear procedural, but it is essential. By updating outdated language and reaffirming the commission's authority to oversee the Children and Families Trust Fund, you're strengthening the foundation that allows First Five San Diego to continue its critical mission, ensuring that every child from birth to age five is healthy, learning, and supported by their family and community. For more than 25 years, First Five has been a cornerstone for families in San Diego County, providing early care, education, and developmental support that truly changes lives. These programs don't just prepare children for school, they prevent crises before they begin. That includes equipping parents with substance use prevention tools and resources that help them model healthy choices and build resilience in their young children. We know that early prevention is far more effective and compassionate than intervention later in life. By giving families the tools to talk about substance use, stress, and mental health early, we're setting our youngest residents on a path toward lifelong well-being. Approving this amendment ensures that First Five can continue to do this work effectively and equitably, reaching every family in every neighborhood with the support they deserve. Thank you for your leadership and your continued commitment to San Diego's children and families.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
First off, I want to go ahead and address Jim Desmond, um, regarding these issues and all that stuff, but I just really want to apologize. I was seeing red after you told me to go find fraud myself, and I was looking through, at you, at it with a jaded eye. And I want really, truly, honestly apologize because when I took a look at how you guys were stealing tax money, you know, finding out how much money you want to take and then taking that exact figure, it sucks. And the fact that you guys refused to go ahead and address, uh, send over the SNAP benefit information to the federal government because you want to hide the fact that our benefits are going to migrants and not citizens, that right there is also fraud. So the only way that you were able to go ahead and get away with this is election fraud. The only way that you could go ahead and steal children from other people is election fraud. The only way that you could go in and approve all these friggin' measures is election fraud because you refused to go ahead and address this. You recognize the fact that you will not lose your position because election fraud will keep you employed. You do not work for the people. You work for the people committing election fraud. You stopped serving us the second you did not refuse, you refused to go ahead and address my concerns. You chose to go ahead and violate the law in that fashion. You want me to go ahead and use the law against you and extract more money from the county because you want it? For what reason? Because you think you're gonna win? You really, really think you're gonna win this? Trump is all over your ass, and if you want to give him one more fucking reason, go ahead and, and try to throw me in jail. I'll go ahead and let you do that just to go ahead and make charges bigger. And I will sue.
We'll hear from the next caller. Your device might be muted.
Okay, my device is not muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go.
And you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so let's start with item three. Uh, First Five Commissions of San Diego. Okay, the commission was created to support children zero to five, and yeah, that sounds noble. Uh, but when you look at it closer, the pattern is clear. The more independent people become on government programs, the more control those in power maintain. We're told it's about helping families, uh, but help that comes with strings attached isn't freedom, it's management. A dependent society is an easily controlled society, and while this system claims to care for the people, it quietly trains them to comply. Uh, we've built a structure where the same government that creates the problems pretends to fix them, but always with a Band-Aid. Band-Aid solutions, never with truth or accountability. Uh, Band-Aids keep people quiet. Band-Aids look like progress. Uh, but the wound, the flaw, the root of the system, uh, is still never addressed. Okay, now on tonight, item number one, let's see, ending the 30-year jail operating agreement and replacing, don't eat the bacon, it's not done! Um, sorry about that. Uh, and replacing it with new freebase model tied to the misdemeanor arrest. This is not a routine matter. This directly affects public safety, funding, and the legal foundation of county operations. If financing and maintenance are based on arrest numbers, what are we, uh, what are we really incentivizing? Justice or revenue? If the county charter governs the sheriff's department but not this new agreement, then the legality and the accountability are questionable. These are not small details to quietly approve under consent, but you guys always shove big pieces like this in consent, so nothing new to the ones paying attention. And the truth is that the system itself is flawed, and yet we continue to go along with it.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
All right, number four, no. My nexus is the board lies when they, uh, pretend that their jurisdiction is to protect the health and well-being of everyone in the region. So ironic. The women on this board support sanctuary for child sacrificed by abortion, support sanctuary for a barbaric mutilation of minor, minor children in the name of the trans agenda, support sanctuary for convicted violent criminal illegal aliens above Americans, support legal marijuana leading to drug addiction, and they're okay with the public being forced to smell that smoke, but yet want to stop tobacco use. And never forget the success HHSA had during the man-made so-called pandemic, spending $1 billion and over 300,000 people in this county still died, families damaged, businesses destroyed, and people suffering from the poison injection to this day. All right, number five, yes to fire stations, but can we ask, are all the residents forced to live in Borrego Springs, or did they choose to live in this area, which then leads to them being relatively isolated? So are, is the county supposed to come in and save them? I think the health clinic should be up to the people, not have a government-funded one. Number six, no. This is government overreach on Section 84 affirmative action program requiring vendors and subcontractors to employ persons with disabilities at all levels of the vendor's workforce for all activities? Not everybody, disabled or not, can perform every job. Wondering if the county holds to this requirement? And can you confirm if there are many patrol or jail deputies in wheelchairs conducting law enforcement activities, all of them? Number eight, sounds too good to be true, residents moving into this pretty little stack impact, please read the small print before you sign up. And let's remember, America's first, Americans first, and we are not all San Diegans. It's Americans or others. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Number two, the sunset review of the sheriff's department. This is essentially bribery in the sheriff's department, but no. It was ordinance sections 66.1 and 4 would allow the sheriff to get many of assets seized by federal agencies, ICE, BPS, FBI, et cetera, and then says that it is essentially bribed to ensure cooperation with them. Says five that, quote, "The program's purpose shall be to provide and add an incentive to the sheriff's office to join with the federal, state, and other local law enforcement agencies to stem the rising tide of crime net," end quote. And then the audit is yearly, so we might not find about their improper use for a year or more. That is, they could arrest someone and chill out their hair looms almost with impunity. The amendments for recommendation one part two should also be attached. If the public proceeding using language like such as or descriptions rather than specifics are not acceptable, closing down the courthouse construction fund completely is a bad idea. The inside is shabby. There will always be need. Um, number one, uh, this is not a routine matter. It concerns public safety, revenue, and, um, jail conditions, and it needs a full airing and discussion. No actual agreement attached, just that the existing contract is old, so let's scrap the old and hope the new is okay. It doesn't. Hopefully, the sheriff's department does not make proofreading errors like most of us do. It is irrational that the sheriff wants.
Thank you. We'll hear from the final caller.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. My name is Becky Rapp, and I'd like to speak to item three. Thank you for your continued support of the First Five Commission and its mission, um, to ensure that every child in San Diego County is safe, healthy, and ready to learn. For more than two decades, the First Five program has been an essential resource for families across the county, helping parents navigate those critical early years. As you consider updates to the county ordinance governing the commission, I urge you to also explore ways to expand early prevention and education, specifically around drug use and its impact on young children and families. Today, we are facing a growing public health crisis with the normalization of high potency marijuana products. Research shows that marijuana exposure during pregnancy can harm fetal brain development, and that use among adolescents increases the risk of anxiety, depression, and long-term cognitive impairment. Early education for both parents and young people can prevent these harms before they take root. Integrating drug prevention and education, especially about marijuana's effects on the developing brain, into the First Five outreach would strengthen the mission to promote healthy and informed families. Prevention begins at home, and First Five is uniquely positioned to help parents understand these risks early. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on the items on the consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Uh, we have a motion, we have a second, uh, so can we please call the vote?
Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion. Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll give everyone a chance to reorganize. I'll give everyone a minute. We're going to be moving on to discussion items, beginning with item number 10. Item 10 is filling the vacancy of the San Diego County elective office of treasurer/tax collector. This is the finalist interviews and the selection. Let me give everyone a moment to get themselves organized, get resettled in the chamber. Okay, thank you all. So let me walk through how this item is going to proceed today. As a reminder for everybody, we are here because we had previously conducted interviews for this position. And there were four finalists selected at that time by the board. And so now, this is our opportunity to consider the current finalists and hopefully make a decision to fill the seat. Yeah, I think it would be important before moving forward with how this item is going to proceed. Supervisor Anderson has gotten up, I think has he officially recused himself from this item? Do you have anything to say on that matter, Andrew?
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. Supervisor Anderson informed me that he is recusing himself from participating in item 10, as he is considering running for the treasurer/tax collector position. He stated in fairness to the candidate, Supervisor Anderson does not believe he should participate in the interim treasurer/tax collector interview and approval process consistent with his recusal when this item was previously considered.
Okay, thank you. So as a reminder, the county charter provides the board the authority to fill by appointment the vacancy of the elected treasurer/tax collector. And Andrew, do you want to run through the slides? Okay, great. We have a slide deck up here.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer, members of the board. The item before you is the final phase of the process to fill the treasurer/tax collector vacancy following the retirement of Dan McAllister. Today has been set aside for the board to conduct interviews of the four finalists that were selected on September 30. I'll provide a brief background before the board begins the interviews. The San Diego County Charter provides the authority for the Board of Supervisors to fill by appointment the vacancy of the elected treasurer/tax collector. The county's charter requires the board to fill this vacancy by appointment. The option to call a special election is only available for Board of Supervisors vacancies, not for vacancies in other elected positions. The individual appointed will hold office until the election of a successor. The next election would be November 3, 2026. Board Policy A105 entitled Filling Vacancies in elective office prescribed the process. This slide shows the board's approval timeline for the process. The application period began on August 27 and was open for 26 days. Applications were due by Monday, September 22 before 12 noon. On September 30, the board interviewed all qualified applicants and selected the four finalists before you today. The board also directed that staff hold a community forum for the public to get to know the finalists. That community forum was held last week on Thursday, October 30 at 5:30 p.m. A summary of the forum has been included with attachment B. Today, the board will interview the four finalists again and appoint an individual to serve as treasurer/tax collector. It is anticipated that the appointee will be sworn in on November 18, 2025, following passing the county's background investigation. As a reminder, there are several requirements to apply for the treasurer/tax collector position and hold that office. Applicants must be a registered voter and citizen of the United States. They must meet the experience requirements to be a treasurer/tax collector. Applicants must not have been convicted of any crime that would disqualify them from holding elected office. And the selected applicant must be able to assume the position within 20 business days following the selection by the board. These are the requirements that are outlined in the county's administrative code for a person to be eligible to serve as treasurer/tax collector. The individual must meet at least one of these requirements. Have at least three years' experience in a senior financial management role in a public agency. Have the educational background or certification as a CPA, chartered financial analyst, or certified cash manager. Applications were available online. The application required applicants to list their residence for the past five years, a written statement outlining their qualifications, and a statement asking why they wish to be appointed. Applicants included a resume and a statement of economic interest or Form 700. The applications for the four finalists have been included as attachment A to today's board letter. For today, as the chair indicated, recommended that the board hear from each of the four finalists. Applicants will be given three minutes to make a presentation. Then we'll hear from members of the public that wish to speak. After public comment, each supervisor may ask any questions of any applicant. Finally, we'll move to the selection process. Supervisors will select one applicant for appointment today. Supervisors will sign the ballot and return it to me, and I will tabulate the ballots and publicly show the results on the screen. An applicant must receive at least three votes to be appointed. Any ties will be broken by subsequent votes among only the applicants that tied. And with that, Chair Lawson Reamer, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, so let me just pause for a moment and make sure my colleagues understand the voting process. Any questions? So we're going to essentially, just to review this, there's the candidate presentations, they're each three minutes. Then if anyone has specific questions for those candidates, if any of my colleagues have specific questions based on their interviews, based on their statement, we will take a moment to ask those questions, ask those follow-ups, these sort of direct follow-ups, to make sure that we don't lose the thread and have an opportunity to do a real interview. But if there's not specific candidate questions, if people have sort of more broad thoughts or comments, we'll ask you to hold those, because then we will hear from the public, after which we will have a board deliberation and a board discussion, opportunity for more robust questions of the candidates that are able to take into account a public comment. And then we will have our board vote. And when we vote, we will, everyone will receive a ballot. I think Andrew has lots of them. And those ballots will be passed out to each of us. We will each vote for one candidate. We will pass that ballot back to Andrew. He will then read off those votes publicly, so everyone is aware of what the vote is. If one candidate gets three votes in the first round, then we're done. If one candidate receives two votes, they automatically move forward to the next round. And if one candidate, any candidate, is tied, which I suppose, given the makeup of this board today, that would mean 1-1. If there were any tie votes, then that person is also moved to the next round. But the way that that happens, and I'll say this again before we take the vote, just so everyone's clear. So that next round of voting would then proceed as follows. There would be a vote first on the tie between the tied candidates. And so if there are, say, two candidates tied with one vote, or four candidates tied with one vote, given that there's four of us, those are the only two options. So if there's either two or four candidates tied with one vote, then there would be a vote held among those candidates. And if any candidate at that time then receives more votes than the other candidate, that candidate is then moved on to the final round. And then there would be a head-to-head between that candidate and the candidate who had two votes. Any questions for my colleagues? Again, I can repeat this again before we vote. Okay, great. So the candidates will have an opportunity to make their three-minute statement, and they will be called in random order. So Andrew has randomized the selection of the speakers. Please go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. The first speaker, first finalist will be Christian Peacock. You'll have three minutes, and I'll ask you to please self-regulate your time. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Chair Lawson Reamer, members of the board. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning and for the thoughtful process you've led to select the next treasurer/tax collector. This decision comes at an important time. It's an opportunity to continue the status quo or invite new leadership with fresh ideas, forward vision, and a long-term commitment to continued excellence in public service. As the elected treasurer for the city of Carlsbad, I oversee treasury operations and manage the city's nearly $1 billion investment portfolio. Since taking office, I focused on transparency, accountability, and efficiency. I identified and corrected gaps in the Carlsbad investment policy and brought it in line with state code. I discovered and disclosed impermissible investments and held those responsible accountable, ultimately closing out those positions at no loss to the city. I started the city's first investment review board, inviting residents to participate in oversight of the city's investments. And after earning the California Certified Municipal Treasurers designation, I more recently began working directly with the CMTA to provide a bottoms-up look at Carlsbad's investment policy. My goal is to bring it in line with best practices and earn formal certification, ensuring that the policy meets the highest standards in the state. And speaking of highest standards, the county treasurer/tax collectors office, already a model success by many measures. My goal isn't to change what's working. It's to strengthen it and make it better, leveraging technology, improving efficiency, and enhancing transparency for taxpayers. I believe this office deserves a leader who can bring fresh ideas and an independent perspective. Someone who's willing to ask the hard questions and modernize where needed. And also someone who's willing to serve beyond the appointed term to provide continuity and accountability to the people. Public finance is not about politics. It's about integrity, stewardship, and trust. So if selected to serve, I'll continue to uphold those principles every day on behalf of all San Diego County residents. So I want to thank you again for your time, your trust, and your support.
Thank you. The next finalist is David Baker.
Thank you, and good morning again, Chair Lawson Reamer and members of the board. I'm David Baker, and I've had the privilege of working 23 years for the county, all within the treasurer/tax collectors office or the TTC, serving the last seven years as chief deputy overseeing our tax operations and managing more than $9 billion in collection activity. And as chief deputy, I also oversee the county's nationally-recognized deferred compensation program. And before joining the county, I spent more than a decade working for international investment banks in Tokyo and London, focusing on bond investments and cash flow management. At our last meeting, we had a chance to discuss the county pool and the investment policy that affirms the TTC's commitment to ESG criteria when investing. And while investing the county pool is certainly important work for the TTC, it is just a part of what we do. Our office is responsible for all tax collection activities and statutory responsibilities. And this is where most of our amazing staff work, serve the public, and make up the backbone of our department. And to give but just a small sample of the work we provide, each year we receive upwards of 200,000 calls, answer more than 10,000 emails, and thousands of in-person questions. Our staff are recognized for their kindness and can-do customer service attitude, while always seeking improvement, as evidenced by the numerous NACO awards the TTC has received. We mail out and collect payments for over 1.2 million bills. We process more than 80,000 refunds. We personally visit every homeowner headed towards a tax sale to speak with them one-on-one and make them aware of potential resources that may assist them. We work closely with developers, providing tax clearance certificates for much-needed new housing. We also work with hundreds of short-term rental operators on the county's TOT ordinance, and much, much more. And ultimately, the public can trust that our staff ensures the money is accounted for and gets to where it needs to go to fund the essential services that we all rely on. And as I mentioned last time we met, this coming year will be transformational change for TTC. We're implementing a new, modern, integrated property tax system that is fundamentally changing our operations. We'll upgrade our complex mail payment system. We will move our critical payment processing center for increased security and continuity. And we will continue pushing forward our projects aimed at improving efficiency, transparency, and the customer service experience taxpayers have with our office and more. And my leadership is collaborative. I love interacting with the public, staff, and colleagues and hearing their input. And my vision over the next year is to proactively lead and empower our team through the numerous critical changes we face to emerge as an even stronger TTC. And I believe I am the right person for this appointment. And I think it's worth saying again that the future is bright for the TTC. And it would be an honor to serve as TTC over the interim 13 months. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next finalist is Deitra Williams.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer, Board of Supervisors. A taxpayer once said, "You take a lot of my money, but you do it with a smile, and you make it really easy." That's the kind of service we provide at TTC. Our mission is to provide superior financial services while maintaining high levels of customer service and satisfaction. I'm Deitra Williams, and I was there when we formulated that mission statement. I was part of the executive team when we made important decisions about implementing technology to make paying easier for taxpayers. I've worked alongside accountants and investment experts, and I understand the importance of safeguarding the treasury pool. It takes 12 months to experience the entire cycle of TTC's function. However, it could take three to four years to really understand how everything correlates so that you can make the greatest impact. The property tax rate of 99% and the poll credit rating of AAA plus reflects that TTC is not broken, but is managed by a team of experts who take pride in their work. That is why I encourage the Board of Supervisors to appoint an internal candidate for the interim treasurer/tax collector's position. I know you want someone in the position who knows what they're doing, intends to do something great, and has your best interest in mind. Having 23 years of experience in TTC does not necessarily mean that I know everything. I've had the privilege of leading people in resolving the most complicated property tax questions. I've developed new tax administration programs, and I've been able to step into each of the different divisions, get to know the talents of the dedicated staff, and bring them together to successfully achieve our goals. I take a practical approach to analyzing scenarios, and I know how to be a lighthouse to help everyone see success at the end of the journey. To be clear, I'm not interested in the elected position. My goal is to carry the department through the transition period and allow the staff to stay focused on the priorities during one of the most unusual economic times in history. Over the next 15 months, we will continue our bold mission, adjust to our new systems, and we will be ready to focus on the priorities of the newly-elected leader. I understand, based on our last meeting, that some of you are finance industry experts, and you may have some ideas for investment strategies. As several of us have mentioned in the previous meeting, there are limitations by law and policy. With your interest in mind, I see an opportunity for more transparent communication to demonstrate how the treasury pool is one of the most trusted depositories in the region, where there are more than 60 voluntary entities who deposit their money. I would also like to thank you for this opportunity. Thank you Supervisor Jim Desmond for serving, and appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. And finally, Larry Cohen.
Good morning, Chair Lawson Reamer and members of the supervisors, Board of Supervisors. It's an honor to be with you today. I want to thank all of you for giving county residents a true voice in this process through last week's community forum. The forum demonstrated your ironclad commitment to input and engagement surrounding critical decisions. Residents and county employees from all over our region attended, and it was an honor to answer their questions along with all of my fellow applicants. Now, I spoke with more than a dozen residents and county staff, and no one expressed concern about changing leadership inside or outside of the department. Instead, what everyone asked me about was vision, about how this office can lead in uncertain times. Across our nation, trust in government is being tested. I don't have to tell you that. Supervisors, you have a choice, to preserve the familiar or to once again model the courage that moves our region forward. Now, the importance of the treasurer/tax collectors office, which manages over 120 employees, $9 billion in annual property tax collections, and $18 billion... employees, $9 billion in annual property tax collections, and $18 billion investment pool, does demand discipline, experience, foresight, and proven leadership. As you recall, my prior experience bridges both the public and private sectors. I hold an MBA with finance training and have extensive direct management experience leading large teams with multimillion-dollar budgets. As Chief of Staff servicing Congressman Vargas in the U.S. House, who sits on Financial Services Committee, I have helped shape national policy on pensions, banking, and fiscal accountability. But I want you to know my vision goes beyond the routine. I want to use this office to strengthen shareholder voice, screen and divest from investments misaligned with community values, and champion middle-class investment strategies. I also want to maintain investment safety and implement more aggressive programs to further help working-class residents struggling to pay their property taxes. Now, I have identified ways to grow revenue within the county's investment pool in compliance with strict rules and guidelines, but those need to be vetted by the internal team. But my preliminary estimates say that that could generate maybe $35 million a year in general revenue fund, money staying within safety and liquidity and following the rules. Now supervisors, we cannot advance together by standing still. The choice before you, I believe, is not about continuity and change, it's between routine management and forward-looking leadership. I want you to know that if I'm selected, I promise to lead with integrity, innovation, and inclusion, ensuring the office is a catalyst for progress in partnership with you, our Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your consideration, and I ask for your support.
Okay, thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any initial questions? Okay, how many public comments do we have on this matter? Okay, we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 10 requests to speak on this item, five in person and five requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received two ecomments, both of those were neutral. Any individuals that requested to speak on item 10 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you will have one minute to address the board, and I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to call forward the first three speakers: Congressman Juan Vargas, Councilmember Michael Inzunza, and allegedly Audra.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. It's an honor to be here with you this morning. My name is Juan Vargas, and I represent the 52nd Congressional District. I stand here this morning to support Larry Cohen for the Office of County Treasurer Tax Collector. I first met Larry back in 1992, when I started running for the San Diego City Council. He joined my team, and we were successful. He then became my Deputy Chief of Staff, worked with me for a number of years, and then, as you know, went off into the private sector and became very successful. In 2000, when my former Chief of Staff went to work with my other Chief of Staff, I asked him to please come back. He had done very well in the private sector, and it was time for public service again. And he came back, and he has done an incredible job. He has, in fact, led our team, he's very well-respected. One of the things that I appreciate most about him is he respects diversity. He understands too the importance of investment. I do sit on the Financial Services Committee. He led us, my team, as well as the committee numerous times during the pandemic. So again, my time is up, but I appreciate your consideration of him, and I think he would be an excellent choice. He's never let me down, he's never let the people of my district down, and I know he wouldn't let you down or the county. Thanks again.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak in support of Larry Cohen for the appointment to the position of Treasurer Tax Collector. My name is Michael Inzunza, and I'm a City Councilmember of the Chilavista and Supervisor Aguirre's District. I've been authorized by several elected officials and community leaders to state our support for Larry's candidacy. Some of these elected officials include State Senator Padilla, Councilmember Henry Foster, my fellow Chilavista Councilmembers Preciado, Chavez, Fernandez, as well as Southwestern College Board President Don Dumas, National City Councilmember Jose Rodriguez, and many others. I'm here to support Larry because I have seen his leadership demonstrated in our community since 1990, when he worked on my father's campaign for National City Mayor. Since that time, I have seen his career supporting working-class communities flourish, from San Diego City Hall to the private sector and back to the public service with Congressman Juan Vargas. In my personal experience, I have seen Larry operate with integrity, urgency, and empathy. Larry has a vision for this office and has the experience to implement that vision. I really appreciate your support for the candidacy of Larry Cohen to join all the colleagues in the South Bay. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Allegedly, Audra will be followed by the remaining speakers in person, Cesar Javier and Mark.
Yes, hopefully Joel does not get this position. Talk about racketeering. It's so interesting to hear people say, "Take money with a smile, make it easy." They also take children with a smile and make it easy as well. And the tax collectors are involved with the child trafficking network, so that's interesting. And it's interesting that people want to be like, "That's crazy, what is she talking about?" I'm talking about through the child welfare, and then collecting of, you know, child support from families that have been ripped apart through that child trafficking network. So, you know, it's interesting, because if Jesus would hear, he'd be flipping the tables right now, because this is a child industrial complex, and you guys racketeer with all the money, you take homes. It's crazy to hear you say you get $9 billion a year from property tax. Where does that money go? I mean, because we don't have anything to see for that and what you're doing, so I guess whoever you're going to pick is going to continue the child trafficking network. Good job.
Thank you. Final call for Cesar Javier and Mark.
Mark, with trash fees on people's property taxes, this government will steal homes of retired seniors and people on fixed incomes who worked hard and are completely innocent. The Treasurer Tax Collector takes an oath of office to defend the Constitution, and any person who would implement this theft against our seniors should not be in this or any other government position. Property tax and federal tax were unconstitutional before the Federal Reserve Act of 1913, and were created to steal Americans' money, to make us pay for the scam national debt the Federal Reserve causes. I'm sure that none of these people are going to obey their oath of office that they'll be required to take and go against us. People need to see these videos, because it is interrelated. There is a, like, when the World Economic Forum website says, "By 2030, you'll owe nothing and be happy," this is how they're going to do it. See Rosa Corey from 3 minutes 30 seconds, see Zai Guiz from 6 minutes 40 seconds to 24 minutes, see this at 5 minutes 28 seconds.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now hear from those who requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller.
From Swallow here, well, I guess I know who got the position. You got the right last name, Cohen. Okay, the tax collector, they call it, oh, Paloma? You gotta pay your taxes, girl. They call it service, collecting what's owed, but tell me, who truly benefits from this load? We work, we give, we pay, we bleed, while those at the top just plant more need. They tax our labor, they tax our breath, they tax our lives from birth to death, and still they stand and smile and say, "It's all for freedom, the American way." But what freedom exists when every day we're charged for simply being in their way? For driving, for living, for owning a home, for daring to dream, for using a phone? To the next tax collector stepping in line, you remember, your duty is not divine. You serve the people, not the chain, for freedom is truth, not for profit or gain.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
I'm glad you're interviewing the finalists publicly. People who owe unpaid taxes, by the way, should also recuse themselves like Joel, especially since it takes only a few minutes to go downstairs and pay the thing. David Baker, Chief Deputy with good collections rate, international experience, but not many innovative ideas, mostly what the office does. Larry Cohen, Fed Finance Agency Experience under Vargas, international experience, Fed experience, though it's not a great recommendation, the Fed debt keeps going up, likely bitter reasons for wanting the job. Chris Peacock, Carlsbad Treasurer for only one year, non-mid-direct treasurer of Bot Tax Experience, a career apparently blank between...
Hear from the next caller.
It's true, I'm so glad cronies Juan and Mike got 60 seconds. However, they were inequitably allowed to go over, when neither ever have anything good to offer. If people like Jose Rodriguez and any Inzunza corrupter supports globalist minion Larry Cohen, who had horrible ideas about money shuffling and taking loans via increased tariff taxes, then that confirms a big no, especially if he can say that this board cares about public input with a straight face. Christian Peacock, if you survive Carlsbad politics, you can't be too weak. I appreciate that you would work towards actual qualifications, which none of the candidates have. Deirdre Williams is so unqualified, it's outrageous that she's even here. I don't care if she smiles while stealing people's money due to state horrible laws aiding and making people homeless, I care about equal treatment for all. Are you going to collect property taxes from the corrupt supervisor who owes $2,600 or not? Surely Nakawatase was the most qualified, but her moral compass must have been incompatible with this board. She's the type that even if the bacon was ready, she wouldn't let these county clowns have one piece, and you can't handle that.
Thank you. Hear from the final caller.
It's clear when the final vote comes in that fraud is going to determine our tax collector. You could go ahead and play games and go 2-1-1, and then go 3-1, and then choose the candidate that you already pre-selected, and this is just filing a checkmark. Like, when you talked to me right before you filed that restraining order against me to prevent me from asking you questions regarding election security at the board meeting, you and when I say I'm going to announce, you decided to press charges against me for what? I still haven't went down there to find out what the hell I did to go ahead and get that. All I did was curse at you. I never threatened you one time, I never put your life in danger one fucking time, but you want to throw me in jail because I want to expose election fraud? How fucked up is that? Serious.
Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you all very much. Just kind of an opportunity now to turn to my colleagues, to see if anyone has any comments or questions for that at this time. Nope. I'll begin with a question, just would be curious, I know that this has been answered previously in the public forum, but for those who weren't there, would, for each, all the candidates, you can answer succinctly, please, would you be intending to run for the seat again in, when the election happens, when it's up for election or not? That's my question. So we could just go in order, starting with Deirdre. Thanks.
Yes, my intention is not to... My intention is not to run for the elected seat.
Okay, thank you. And Deirdre did a great job of being succinct, thank you. You're welcome. Christian.
Yeah, so I'm not looking at this as a short-term appointment, so my goal is to provide continuity and accountability long-term for the public. So I intend to serve the full term, and if the public allows beyond that, to consider serving beyond that as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Larry?
Yes, I intend to run.
Okay, thank you. David?
No, I don't intend to run.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments from any of my colleagues? Let me just say then, before we move to vote, if no one else has any comments, I just would, I just want to acknowledge and appreciate both David and Deirdre for putting your names forward, for the work that you do every single day for our community and in that office, and really for your selflessness to say, "Hey, you see that there's a need for someone to take the helm for the next year," and being both willing to do that, and then being willing to continue serving in that office, as you have been doing a year from now, under new leadership, because I think that is what I've heard both of you say today, and I think that's very noble, selfless, and is an example of the kind of public service that I hope we can all aspire to here at our county. So just thank you to both of you for putting your name in the hat and stepping forward in this time. Not to not thank Larry and Christian, but wanted to particularly acknowledge David and Deirdre stepping out of their comfort zone into a more public role, and then being willing to continue doing the sometimes thankless behind-the-scenes work that makes our county run. So thank you. Supervisor Montgomery, step.
I just want to say thank you to all of you for going through this process. It's been months-long, and I'm sure there's a lot of anxiety with having the public interviews and just being very well-prepared, and so I just wanted to say thank you.
Just to echo on that, just thanks for stepping up, and this isn't an easy job, easy task, and you put yourself out there, and I appreciate it, so thanks.
Okay, seeing no further request for comment, we will do our first round of ballots, which look like this for the public. So reminder, it says "Vote for one," so vote for one, and then sign your ballot and pass it to Andrew. Thank you.
And Chair Lawson Reamer, as the votes come up on the screen, we have, pardon me, pardon me, just one moment here, oops. Just double-checking, just double-checking here. So as this is coming up, Chair Lawson Reamer, Larry Cohen received two votes, David Baker received one vote, and Deirdre Williams received one vote.
Okay, thank you very much. So that means we have another round of voting, and the way this will proceed is follows, it'll be David and Deirdre, because they're tied, each received one vote. And so how this works, just to remind everyone, the four of us get a ballot, we each can vote, oh, Andrew's going to help us out, he's circling your choices. You can vote for David or Deirdre, and that's it. And if either of them receive three votes or two votes, and the other, or receives more votes than the other one, they advance. And you also don't have to vote, I mean, you can abstain, I'm telling my colleagues. So if David or Deirdre receive more votes than the other one, then they advance. If they tie, then we do this again. One vote for either of those two.
and two votes for Deirdre Williams.
Okay, thank you very much. So then, now we have two candidates remaining in the running, Deirdre Williams and Larry Cohen. Cohen. So the ballots will be distributed again, and your choices to my colleagues are Dietrich
Chair Protem, we have a tie vote, two votes for Larry Cohen, two votes for Dietrich Williams.
Okay, thank you very much. So we've got a tie between Larry Cohen and Dietrich Williams. This is how I'm going to proceed, we're going to do one more round of voting, and if we do not, we're not able to decide, we'll take a brief recess, as I personally needed to take a recess. So we will take a round of voting, and then we'll take a brief recess if we're not able to decide. I do, would like to ask before we vote again, if any of my colleagues would like to share any thoughts on their choices of why they're voting the way they're voting, or anything that they think could persuade their colleagues to change their minds. Any thoughts from anyone?
I just have a quick question to the two finalists. What would be your approach to integrating this, the new property tax system that has to be implemented in this next, I guess, fiscal year? What is the, what is the approach to that?
We recently implemented the integrated property tax system, and our staff have gone through extensive training. We are in the process of working out a lot of the bugs in the system, but the staff is already enthusiastic about it, the technology is awesome, and we're looking forward to leveraging the new technology to provide great services to the taxpayers.
Yeah, I'd say first do no harm. As Dietrich just outlined, I think it's pretty far down the path, the train has left the station, so my job would be to support it and make sure that it's embraced and fully operational as quick as possible to make sure it's efficient and effective and really changes the dynamic.
And Chair.
I just, and I want to say thank you again for everybody for stepping up to this. I just, you know, I'm voting for Dietrich, and because this is an interim position, and Larry, I think you're more than qualified, and you, you know, you've got the Congress member here as well, but we got to, you know, we got an election in 13 months that could change the face of the tax collector. So I think, you know, the more pressing issue is to keep the boat afloat, keep the engine running. Many people already know Dietrich in the office, know what she's like, and, you know, going to keep, keep things running and churning, and to me, that's kind of the interim position, and so that's why I'm going to be supporting Dietrich in this effort.
Any other comments from anybody?
Just have a question about the town hall, the impressions that you both received. What did you hear from the folks that attended the town hall about their interest and concerns around the office?
I really enjoyed the town hall. It was well-attended by Treasurer Tax Collector's staff. We appreciate their support, and we had some great conversations. It was awesome to have an opportunity to talk more with Larry and Christian and learn what their objectives are, and the public who attended was mostly interested in continuing to serve the public and continuing the operations as they are, and they appreciate the support that they have from David and I.
Yeah, I would echo those comments. Specifically, residents of the public who attended wanted to really know actually where do my tax dollars go, when the money comes in, how is it actually allocated, how can you create some transparency around that? You know, I know numerous people say, I pay a lot in property taxes, but I'm not really sure where they go. And so it was a great opportunity to take those questions, to give them feedback, and I would absolutely echo what Dietrich said, it was a real pleasure to get to know all of my fellow applicants. So it was a really great experience, to be honest with you. I'm very glad it was set up.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a question. Thank you. Thank you all. I thanked you last time, but I want to take the opportunity to thank you again for submitting your applications and for putting yourselves out of your comfort zones. I appreciate that. But my question is, so we have many low-income residents that have either language barriers or are, you know, not digitally savvy, so how would you ensure that these residents have equal access to the TTC office? And what would you do to make sure that they fully understand the services that are available and that they can feel served?
That's a great question. Thank you very much. I would say this is not an unfamiliar problem that any other treasurer or tax collector, especially in a diverse community like ours, faces in the Western United States. And the nice thing is, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here, so I would take a look at what other peers in our, in our Western region are doing, things like happy creating a community tax help day and partners with libraries and senior centers and community nonprofits, so that people can come in and get those questions answered, creating opportunities for those that don't have access to digital technology, to sign up for mail. There is still a large percentage of our population that doesn't really have critical access to digital tools. I would work with nonprofits and foundations to get the word out, who tend to focus more on working-class communities, and expanding, making sure that the word is out about partial payment or tax postponement outreach programs. So there's a number of things that we could do, and I would model what's been best practice.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the question. First of all, we actually have three branches that are within the communities of San Diego County, and all of those branches serve a very diverse community. With that in mind, the Treasurer Tax Collector, over many years, has had staff within our offices who speak multiple languages, and we make those staff available to the public if they need translation services, if they need additional information. What's most important is to being able, to be able to translate accurately. It's not a field where normal translation is easy, and so we have staff who have been experts in that area to translate accurately. We also have programs for opportunities for homeowners to have exemptions, and we advocate for the property tax postponement program for seniors and the disabled. We definitely have experience with low-income property taxpayers, helping people understand property taxes, educating them, and providing language services. Our website also has the ability, even though there may be some technological challenges for people, we've been able to walk through with our taxpayers the technology. We've made it so easy, it even has the ability to translate. So they've appreciated all of the times that we've helped them walk through the technology.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments or thoughts to share before we vote?
Chair Lawson Reimer, with finalist Larry Cohen receiving three votes. Larry Cohen is appointed as Treasurer Tax Collector.
Thank you all, and I just, again, really want to thank everyone. I know that this is a, it's been a grueling process, you know, I think putting yourself forward in a public way is always hard, but in particular, you came down, you did a set of interviews, then you had a public forum, where all sorts of other people asked you questions, and now you're here again today, so thank you just for everyone for stepping up, and I just really appreciate you all, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Andrew, can you describe to us a little bit next steps on this swearing-in of Treasurer Tax Collector?
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reimer. It is anticipated that Mr. Cohen will be sworn in at the November 18th Board of Supervisors meeting at 9:00 a.m., subject to following passing the county standard background investigation. There's staff from the Department of Human Resources waving her hand back there that will meet with you, Mr. Cohen, to begin that process.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, we will move back on to item number 11. Let me give everyone a moment to get resituated. Yeah. So I'm going to take a moment to introduce this item, which I've co-docated with my colleague, Chair Protem Geary, and then I'll hand it over to her to make additional comments, and then we'll go to public comment, and then we'll return to the board. So I just want to kind of put this in context. This item is an urgent measure to demand immediate federal action to get food assistance to thousands of San Diegans. The food crisis we're in today is not, is not an accident. It is manufactured because the Trump administration has billions of dollars in emergency SNAP reserves and chose not to use them. Now there's been two court orders mandating that that funding gets spent, but there's been no expedited action towards beginning to disperse those funds, no real timeline in place whatsoever, and families still don't have their benefits. So I think it's useful to put this in local context. Nearly 70% of CalFresh families are already running out of food. About 1 in 4 have $0 left on their EBT cards, and another 45% have less than $50. And so our message to the Trump administration is very simple, it's to release the full funding immediately. That's their legal duty, their ethical duty, and their moral duty. And I think before just, I think it would be helpful to put in context the system we've built and spent a lot of time investing in here in San Diego County. Over the past four years, we've really been trying to fix our CalFresh system here in San Diego County. Through our Make the County Work for All initiative, which was one of my first priorities in 2021, we really modernized how people get access to help. So CalFresh applications that once took 30 days now take 18 days, and for thousands of families who qualified for CalFresh but never got it because of red tape, that change has made a huge difference. So today, more than 70,000 additional San Diegans are receiving the help that they need and deserve to put food on the table. So that, again, just to really center for folks, there were about 70,000 people in San Diego that were falling through our cracks, and over the last four years, we've done everything we can to ensure that they, they can eat. I mean, now all that work is in jeopardy. This increase has meant more, about $15 million more federal dollars flowing into our local grocery stores and farmer's market every single month. That's about $700 million additional food dollars in San Diego County over the last four years because of our Make the County Work program. So I'm proud, I'm proud of that growth, and we need these programs. So I wanted to bring this item today because we have worked so hard to expand food security here in San Diego, and now all of that work is in jeopardy. Even though the court has mandated that the Trump administration release these SNAP funds, it still has not done so. So I'd really appreciate the support of my colleagues to send a clear message to the Trump administration to stop playing politics with hunger and follow the court orders. With that, I'd like to turn it over to my co-author Supervisor Geary.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your partnership on this item. It's clear that no family in San Diego County or anywhere in this country should ever have to wonder where their next meal will come from. The Trump administration is playing politics with food using SNAP, one of the most effective anti-poverty programs in our nation's history, as leverage in a manufactured crisis. This is not about budgets or bureaucracy, this is a clear power grab by the Trump administration, and the people being hurt are the working families, seniors, and children already struggling to get by. Now, two federal courts have declared the suspension of SNAP benefits as unlawful, and although the Trump administration announced it will restart SNAP, it will do so with only half of the usual funding. People are struggling to get by, and they are only putting half of what they're supposed to be putting forward to fund this program. This is not good enough for the hundreds of thousands of San Diegans who rely on this vital program, and the county has a moral responsibility to act in their defense. Most of those recipients are actually in my district and District 1. We are joining counties across California to build a statewide coalition with the California State Association of Counties, as well as our state and congressional delegation partners who are fighting to stop these political games. Hunger is a policy choice, and I refuse to accept a system that treats food as a bargaining chip. So I ask my colleagues for their support, and I reiterate my gratitude to Chair Lawson Reimer for your partnership on this item.
Okay, we can go ahead to public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reimer. We have 15 requests to speak on this item, eight in person and seven requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received 11 e-commerce, six in support, four in opposition, and one neutral. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 11 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on this item, you will have one minute to address the board, and I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'll be calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals, Miriam Castaneda, Sabrina Dozier,
Good morning, Buenos dias. My name is Miriam. I'm a proud SEIU Local 221 Union Member and county employee. I'm actually a human service specialist. I work hand-in-hand with CalFresh, Medi-Cal, and CalWorks. I'm here to talk about what's going on with our CalFresh. It's really sad to see our customers with despair and uncertainty at this time. I receive many calls. I also know that Family Research Center are receiving customers who don't know what to do, and it's not only single mothers, it's not only children, it's our veterans who serve this country. We also have a lot of seniors that don't We also have a lot of seniors that don't have money or groceries to actually have food on their table. I don't believe it's okay, especially in this country, for a family or individual to go without eating. I want to thank Chair Lawson and Paloma Aguirre for this item.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Sabrina Dozier. I do work for the Northeast Family Resource Center. I'm speaking on behalf of my coworkers and people who work for the Family Resource. It's really hard to go, to be able to go home and tell your families that you will not have food on the table because you simply can't afford it. I do ask, I do want to take this time to thank Chair Tierra Lawson-Reimer and Supervisor Paloma Aguirre for bringing this forward, and we, I do urge people to vote yes on this item, and I want you guys to think of your families and think of this community as one and not separate. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'll invite three additional speakers, allegedly Audra, Cesar Javier, and Casey Shirk.
Hi, good morning. My name is Nayeli Castillo-Santario. I am a proud SEIU 221 Union member and county employee. I have worked at the mighty Metro Family Resource Center here in downtown for two years. The work that we do is vital to the community because it provides access to food, which is an essential human need. Many of our customers are unhoused, and with the coming cold months, they have enough to worry about without also worrying about where they will get their next meal. The unhoused recipients of CalFresh depend almost completely, if not completely, on their benefits to eat. The food banks do not have enough to support the 400,000 San Diegans who depend on CalFresh, and those recipients also deserve the dignity of choosing what they eat, just like those of us who are fortunate on CalFresh. We strongly urge you to vote yes on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Talk about FAFO. I told you guys that all along, and then we have Kimzy over here, who's been aiding and abetting, giving illegal immigrants all of these benefits. It's quite interesting, because as these people were flooding across our border here, and you guys were providing all of this stuff, I mean, you could go buy the homeless, and they don't even get that kind of stuff. But you guys lickety-split will make sure that somebody that crosses the border illegally is going to get into housing and get benefits that people in our communities have been waiting for, for a very long time. So, it's really sad to see you guys are like, "We're going to go to the Trump administration." You made your choices. You're the reason why this stuff is being cut, because it is fraud, waste, and abuse when you neglect to give it to people in our community and give it to someone else. That's like someone coming to my house, and I have children, and I'm like, "I'm going to feed that person over my kid, because it's important to make sure they're fed." Bullshit.
I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in person. Mark, Natalie Raschke, and Joshua Bohannon.
Hello, my name is Casey. I am a human services specialist with the county, and I am a proud SEIU member, Local 221. I am here to urge you to vote yes on item 11. I am on the front lines of eligibility for SNAP and Medicaid. I am the one talking to our people who are so clearly struggling, who need their full allotment of CalFresh benefits. With rent being too damn high and ever-rising costs of gas and groceries, to deny people access to their full SNAP benefits is inhumane and weaponizes food against the people you are supposed to be representing. Some of my clients who are in this room or are listening in today look at their faces and determine which of us get to starve. Meanwhile, I want to walk you through a short history lesson of leaders in countries who have also weaponized food. We have Jocelyn Stalin, who enacted famine against the people of Ukraine in 1932 to 1933. Mao Zedong enacted famine on his own people in China in 1959 to 1961. We have Nazi Germany enacted the Hunger Plan, which led to the deliberate starvation of millions of people in...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Board of Supervisors. Josh Bohannon with Father Joe's Villages. Father Joe's, our mission is to prevent and end homelessness one life at a time. There are 400,000 San Diegans that are relying on these benefits, 130,000 children, 100,000 seniors, and we know the fastest-growing homeless population are elderly and our families. Homelessness has gone down for most population groups, but for those two, seniors and families, those have gone up, and the choice between shelter, food, or medicine is a tough choice. Eliminating food benefits is going to increase people's likelihood of experiencing homelessness, increase the likelihood of having medical emergencies themselves, and for the kids, I don't know how you can focus in school if you don't have something to eat. So, I think it's worth considering, if benefits are reduced for this population group for food benefits, we will see homelessness increase, and so, this is an urgent issue and should be treated as urgently as hopefully this board will move forward on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark, I'm not right or left, and I don't like that Trump is doing this. However, even more, I don't like Tara, that you, Tara Lawson-Reimer, are responsible, along with Nathan Fletcher and Nora Vargas and some others, for not stopping Newsom, who's a young global leader for the World Economic Forum, from opening our borders completely against U.S. law, as you guys provided tons of benefits our citizens don't have to entice them to come illegally, which is illegal in itself. And what's the result of this? Well, here's a stack of crimes, of titles, of crimes in the United States. This is just like the tip of the iceberg for why we're being denied. It's unbelievable how much crime is occurring because of what you've done, Tara. And you did have, you swore an oath to uphold the Constitution and stop Newsom, who, by the way, wants to destroy us. He's a young global leader. His purpose is to destroy us. America is what stands in the way of global domination by...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sorry, this...
Hi, Natalie Raschke. We'll never get anywhere unless we actually face the reality of what's happening. This is a mental warfare on its, on its people, its own country. We have to get real with what's really happening. You may not like the way other people come up here and deliver the information, but it's true. There is an agenda. There's a war against the people. They, this is power. They're trying to take our power. They do. They work for us, and if you guys sit up here, you have to understand that this is happening. Because it's an insult. It's an insult if you ignore what's happening to our system.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We'll begin with our first caller.
ConSwallow, amen, Natalie. Okay, so, yeah, the blame game. Here we go. It's the system itself that creates the problem, and it's the same system that profits from dependency. For decades, we've been handed Band-Aids for wounds they refuse to heal. Hunger programs, subsidies, and waivers are all temporary patches that makes us reliant on government approval, government food, and government control while pretending to solve the crisis, but the root issue is, again, never addressed. San Diegans should know how to grow their own food, support local farms, and feed their families without waiting for permission. True freedom means self-reliance, the ability to nourish yourself in your community without being trapped by the system. Every solution this government offers is designed to maintain control, keep divided, and keep us dependent. Hunger isn't a lack of food, it's a tool of suppression, a system of, a Band-Aid system that's over actual empowerment. So, instead of pointing fingers, let us focus on the real solutions: empowerment, education, self-sufficiency. But until...
Now, hear from the next caller.
All the bold, go ConSwallow. Those are good recommendations. Since it was announced yesterday that the contingency reserves will be used to fund SNAP benefits, the letter you want to send would be inappropriate. Another CAO recommendation, like enhanced legislative support, are part of establishing a bridge program. I don't know why San Diego is so special that you need to spend money on this. It is well-intentioned, but it will probably be just one more in a huge stack of letters. I worry that after all this effort, a blank sheet of paper might well be as effective. Fed judges ordered the continuation of SNAP benefits, and California is providing emergency funding. This may not be something that needs to be done right now, and it's good to have a little...
Hear from the next caller.
PDF corrupters can claim someone's playing political games when they literally just played politics, was picking a corrupt politico as the treasurer tax collector. The manufactured crisis was the nonsense you guys did in 2020, locking down the county, where it hasn't even financially recovered yet. This board created the hunger crisis and poverty crisis. Take responsibility. This is yet another politically fake crisis with union minions playing politics with our board meetings. What happened to food banks, churches, mosques, and synagogues that always help people? Doesn't the county have programs to aid those residents in need, or did they blow all our tax dollars on noncitizens? Communist-controlled TikTok is propagandizing people to snap over social snap, but everybody knows it's the crazy Democrats like shutdown Schumer who want people to suffer and die. They prove it in their destructive policies and in the fact that they refuse to pass a basic budget, to instead insist on wasting American tax dollars on noncitizens. Democrats already admitted this Schumer shutdown is their leverage. Anyone who plays this political game should forfeit their salaries. It's about fear and control.
Now, hear from the final caller.
Hey, how you guys doing? What about the SNAP? Could you go ahead and send over the documentation on how you've been spending the SNAP benefits? The federal government wants to know that information, and I definitely agree with him cutting the funds in half. Hell, I would say, "Don't give it to us at all." I warned you about a civil war, and if you want to go ahead and divert all our money to migrants, that is fraud. You love fucking fraud. You, you supported in our elections, you supported every single step of the way. You want to go ahead and steal every single aspect of us. Our homeless only went up for the past, since 2020 to 2024, only started going down now because Trump is demanding receipts. So, you guys have to quickly go ahead and house homeless people so that you could show that you've been actually doing something, but the truth is, the second you hand over those documents, all those migrants that you've been handing those supplies to, fuck...
Chair Lawson-Reimer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me, before we begin a conversation with the board, I just want to make a motion for the, I asked my colleagues to support this item. Chair, I'm happy to make a second and have a quick comment. Okay, go ahead. I appreciate everybody calling in and showing up in support, but I just want to say to the workers who are processing these applications, this is not your fault. I don't want you feeling in any way guilty. This is entirely caused, like I said in my earlier remarks, by this administration, who has chosen to deny entitlement programs to taxpayer citizens of this country. So, please, don't put that burden on your shoulders. Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. While I don't agree with the political rhetoric of the board letter, or that it's one party's fault, I don't even think this comes close to painting an accurate picture of what's really happening, I think, at the federal level. Democrats in the US Senate have now voted 14 times, 14 times, there was another vote taken this morning, against a funding bill that would end the government shutdown. Our most vulnerable residents are now grappling with real-life repercussions from all, from all politicians in DC, putting party first. Regardless, advocating for the use of the contingency funds to fund SNAP temporarily is really only a short-term solution. Those contingency funds aren't going to, I don't know what the timeframe is, but it's very short, and it's not a long-term solution. And quite frankly, we're treating the symptom and not the cause. Expanding government programs doesn't solve poverty. It masks the affordability crisis that's driving it. Nearly 20% of Californians now rely on benefits that were meant to be temporary, and there's about four new potential taxes just in San Diego County coming online: SandAg, the city sales tax, the city tax on second homes, county potential tax coming forward. All of these taxes are going to just keep making problems worse. That's not progress, and it's proof that California has become unaffordable for working families, and that's our fault. The San Diego County alone, there's over 400,000 residents that receive CalFresh, and that's a 25% increase since 2020. Expanding welfare isn't compassion, it's creating permanent dependency. 58% of students who graduated within the last year are still looking for a job. College graduates, 58% of them, can't find a job. The median age of a first-time homebuyer has gone from 31, the median age, 31 years old in 1981. It's, the median age today is 56. Young families are being shut out completely, out of housing, and 40% of Gen Z believe they're never going to be able to own a home, so the American dream is never going to be attainable. We just, the real crisis, not the lack of government programs, but a lack of opportunities for young people to move up, for people to take care of themselves. Instead, we've got more people coming onto government programs. So, meanwhile, every level of government keeps reaching the same failed solution: another tax, another bureaucracy, another promise, you know, "Just get Trump to do this, and it'll all be fixed." No. The county, we just hired a consultant to study adding another tax. $500,000, we're paying the consultant. And the city, as mentioned earlier, City of San Diego is looking to do the same. This endless cycle of taxation is driving people out of the state. Housing, groceries, utilities have all skyrocketed, and families can't keep up. So, that's why we have more and more and more people on SNAP. Nearly 1 in 5 Californians now depend on benefits. This isn't compassion, that's failure. The long-term solution is address the cost-of-living crisis and not make it worse. So, I'm going to support the item today, even with all this. I'm going to support it today. It's sending a letter saying, "We want to make sure that people that need SNAP get it," but we have to be able to fix this problem instead of it just keeps expanding. So, because this is a crisis, and we need to ensure that people can, can buy food as soon as possible, I'm going to support the item today, but I do think it's a Band-Aid, not the long-term fix. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Montgomery, stop.
I want to thank you, Chair, and the Chair Pro Tem for bringing this forward. We are seeing this devastation daily, and thank you for all the members of the public who called in and came down, but I do want to particularly thank our employees that are on the front lines, having to give our most vulnerable community members the truth about where this program is and where other programs are. That is devastating emotionally for all of the parties involved, and so, while there is a lot of fighting, there are also those of you who are on the ground, and I just want to particularly call that out. I just have to say, as a reminder to everyone, it has been very clear that the priority for this federal administration is the top 1%, and that is the reason why people who apply and work at Walmart are also given instruction on how to apply for food stamps, because they will not be getting a living wage where they can afford food and work there at the same time. So, when we do talk about the affordability crisis, we can include government, we can include all these other things, but we have to include the conversation around the corporations, because they are not paying their fair share, and they, people are working on the backs of the taxpayer and working 40 hours a week, 35 hours a week, and still can't afford to feed their families. So, that is what is missing, I think, in this, this conversation oftentimes, because we're so, we want to serve the people, and we're so dedicated to doing the work, all of us on this dais, I think I've seen at one time or another, but that is the truth, and that we should not be ashamed to say that, that... But that is the truth, and that we should not be ashamed to say that, that the top 1%, that the income inequity is growing and growing and growing, that gap is growing and growing and growing, and that is the problem. So I happily support this item, obviously, but I just have to, I want to focus on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Giri.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the comments from the Vice Chair, because you hit the nail on the head. The systems of oppression, the systems of capitalism, the failed system of trickle-down economics started by Reagan is what got us here. So how privileged it is to say, oh, people shouldn't depend on these programs. I guess people who say that have never experienced poverty or had never experienced having to not have money to put food on the table for their children. So that was not the intent of this board letter. The intent of this board letter is to call on the federal administration, which has been told by two different rulings, that it is illegal what they're doing. I thought this administration was about law and order. Well, they're refusing to do that, and by refusing to do that, they're delaying the benefits that these families are entitled to having, and we are calling on them to expedite rollout of the SNAP program. But we got into a philosophical conversation, which I appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Please go ahead and vote.
Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously, with all supervisors being present.
Okay, thank you all very much. We'll now move on to Item 12, exploring options for establishing a safety net bridge program to address anticipated gaps in services for residents disenrolled from benefit programs. I'll turn the floor over to Vice Chair Montgomery Step to kick us off, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you so much, Chair Lawson Reamer. In line with the conversation that we are having, the federal government's new rules, particularly coming out of H.R. 1, which is somewhat separate from the conversation around the impacts of the government shutdown, but, you know, is part of an entire, a whole conversation with regard to the county. Those rules are structured in a way that all but guarantees coverage losses, creating administrative hurdles that make it harder for eligible people to stay enrolled into these programs. We don't have to speculate about what happens when work reporting requirements and redeterminations hit coverage programs. We've already seen it. When similar Medicaid work and reporting rules took effect in Arkansas, nearly 1 in 4 enrollees lost coverage within seven months. We also discussed this over our budget conversations around the impact on our employees. We are looking at the possibility of a quarter of a million people in San Diego losing safety net benefits like Medi-Cal and CalFresh. Today's item directs the county to explore all available options for creating a safety net bridge program, a targeted way to keep people connected to health care and food and get them re-enrolled in social services if they fall through the cracks created by the federal government. We know that unstable insurance coverage is tied to more emergency room usage and to worse outcomes. We want to address these upstream causes before they overload our hospitals. We still do have time to act, especially on the Medicaid side and Medicaid front, and that is exactly what this item is about, preparing now so that we are not caught off guard. I'm proud to introduce this item today because it shows that the county's commitment is to being proactive around serving members of our community. We see what's coming and we are choosing to meet it head-on. I'm proposing that we optimize how we make use of the resources that we already have. Our LivWell Centers are built to deliver integrated social services, but they do not yet consistently offer direct primary care scaled to the need that we are anticipating, nor do they offer same-day food access. Instead, they make referrals to community partners for these services. Referral systems aren't always perfect. They often miss the warm handoff. The patient leaves the clinic with a piece of paper or information, but not a confirmed link oftentimes. We can address that gap by locating medical, food and benefit enrollment navigation under one roof to reduce the number of separate agencies that a person must navigate. Want to discuss briefly, before we go into a public comment, on what this item does not do. We are not creating a new county-run health system or committing new funds today. We are, if passed, we are directing staff to study what's possible, assess feasibility and cost, bring back options with the report-back structure within 45 days, and then a return back with a plan within 90 days. I know that we don't have the same level of federal and state coordination that we had during COVID, but there is clear precedent for the county expanding access through alternate sites when lives instability were at stake. We are entering a true public health emergency. I believe that we must treat it with the same urgency and coordination as any public health crisis, looking to every possible action to keep people connected to care. I want to just say that I've been mulling this for months and thinking about ways that the county can really increase the impact of all of our partners when it comes to food access and medical care. I have, as an elected official for not very long, seven years is, you know, not super long, but in that time have gone through two separate 100-year events. And although I believe, I was here at the county for one and not at the county for the other, but I do believe the county stepped up in both of those. I still believe that we were on our heels. And I really would like to explore how we develop an infrastructure so that we, so that even less people fall through the cracks and we're prepared as this anticipated loss of services occurs. And so we certainly have more work to do, but I think the board letter outlines some really awesome ideas about how we can, as a county, truly show up for members of our community and show up with our partners in the various fields of food and medical services. And so with that, I will turn it over to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery Step. We have 27 requests to speak on this item, 14 in person and 13 requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received 15 ecomments, 12 of those in support, one in opposition, and one neutral. For any individuals that requested to speak on Item 12 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on the side of me, we'll have one minute to address the board. I'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'll be calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. I'd like to invite for the first three individuals, Esme Quintero Kubian, Mohammed Umar, and Deborah Samuels. If I've called your name, please come forward.
My name's Esme Quintero Kubian. I'm the Outreach and Organizing Coordinator for San Diego Pride and a constituent of D4. Hey! As y'all know, SC Pride is one of the largest LGBTQIA+ arts, culture, and advocacy organizations in our region, and SC Pride would like to encourage y'all to vote yes on Items 12 and 15. Food and housing are both inalienable rights of San Diegans and all people of our country. The decision of the federal government to eliminate housing and food assistance is political violence in and of itself, one that has unfortunately been condoned and utilized time and time again. LGBT people are disproportionately impacted by food insecurity, homelessness, and violence, especially in our parts here in San Diego. SC Pride encourages the county to take action to prevent further economic alienation of 2S LGBTQIA+ people. So thank you. Please vote yes on Items 12 and 15.
Thank you. Not seeing Mohammed or Deborah, we'll go to allegedly Audra, Rudy, and Dale McKenney.
Ryan, before we go, as allegedly Audra comes up to the mic, just to be clear, this is public comment on Item 12 only.
Okay, yes. Well, the system is working. You know, it's not red versus blue, it's New World Order versus you, and it's all about total control, so you have to control the resources, to control the people, and it's interesting to see as the government grows, so does dependency. And it's sad that people don't really see what's happening, that even just that invasion was part of all of this. You guys did all your parts and, you know, you're supporting all these people, we're allowing this to come in so that, you know, total control can take place. So all you have to do is really pay attention, because it's problem, reaction, solution. Out of order comes, out of chaos comes order. And it's sad, but that's what's happening. So it's like, you guys are doing a very good job implementing all of that, and it'll be interesting to see when you guys are on this side begging for the same, because you guys racketeer with the money. It's your choices that have led to this, and you want to blame shift, but take responsibility for your choices.
Hi, my name is Rudy Hernandez. I'm an SEIU member, and I'm a Human Services Specialist Eligibility Worker with the county for at least two years now. So the United States used to promise us life, liberty, and property, and in real time, what I'm witnessing is that it's not currently accessible to a majority of Americans, and it's being dangled like a carrot, higher and higher, out of reach for a majority of people. I am here in support of Item 12, as this would help a lot of families who are losing access to basic health care due to changes in policies and regulation. And I would also like to highlight that due to the changes, our workers will also be dealing with the increased workload due to the changes and with insufficient staffing. There could be, there could be a lack of quality for the sake of efficiency. People deserve to live with dignity and be healthy in doing so. We can't.
My name is Deborah Samuel. I'm a leader with San Diego Organizing Project, and I thank Ms., Ms., I forgot her name. Well, I thank her for the plan that she's doing, because I'm one of the recipient that is going through a lot of problems, not having enough food in my house. And I know in my community, when we do this own visit, a lot of people is crying out. Also, in my visit I do with St. Vincent de Paul, a lot of people is crying out, they don't have enough food for their families. So we need to do something to help these families, because back in the days, they had a program similar to this. So we need to do something for these families, because they need a plan, because we don't, we can't have families that they work in and don't have what to eat. So please, do something right now to help these families, and please do something real.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'd like to invite the next three speakers. Cesar Javier, Danny Hickey, Casey Shirk.
Hi, my name is Danny Hickey, and I'm the Executive Director, Fraternity House, Inc. We're a county-wide housing provider headquartered in North County, serving HIV-positive people and their associated households. Public benefits complement the local services like those at FHI. Nearly every one of the households in our care or rehabilitated by our services are recipients of these public benefit programs, and many could be disenfranchised or disenrolled. These items are vital to their health and housing stability. Without them, they stand to become ill from their HIV diagnosis without Medicaid, seniors stand to have empty cupboards without SNAP, and FHI, as a nonprofit, cannot completely address their needs without these programs. Understanding what local resources for these folks are available and providing more opportunities for case managers to help address these folks will make a difference. FHI is doing everything that we can to help the health-vulnerable adults and seniors living with HIV and AIDS. Without a plan for these benefit programs, our service impact will be reduced. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Casey. I am a Human Services Specialist with the county for the last two years and a proud member of SEIU Local 221. I'm here to urge you to vote in favor of Item 12 for our seniors, our students, and our families. Health care is too expensive. Most of us in this room are one medical emergency away from homelessness. Item 12 is not only beneficial to Medi-Cal recipients, it is beneficial to those who pay out-of-pocket for their health insurance. Our hospitals receive subsidies through Medicaid and Medi-Cal. If those subsidies are cut, who do you think is going to be absorbing those costs? It's not going to be the hospitals, they will just inflate their costs. It's going to be us, too. Insurances are going to inflate their costs to combat the rising costs of health care, and it's going to be us that are going to be paying those premiums. Additionally, it adds more obstacles for the worker determining eligibility and for the community members needing health care, creating more work and stress for both parties. Our communities need health care without obstacles, and our workers need to be able to provide that health care without having to withhold health care for support.
Thank you. I'd like to invite three additional speakers. Alondra Alvarado, Mark, Natalie Raschke.
Buenas tardes, Chair Supervisors. My name is Alondra Alvarado. I'm here on behalf of San Diego Hunger Coalition. Our research shows that more than 1 in 4 San Diegans experience this nutrition insecurity. We see firsthand how federal policy changes, like those in H.R. 1, are putting thousands more at risk of losing access to both food and health care. These are the numbers on a page. There are families skipping meals, seniors rationing medication, and parents forced to choose between rent and groceries. The Safety Net Bridge Program is a vital step to keep people connected to care and nourishment when the federal government fails them. It's practical, it's compassionate, and it's urgent. As our coalition, we understand the importance of partnership and resource exchange, the very kind cross-sector collaboration this item calls for. We will be honored to support the county, where our data identify needs and support implementation, so no San Diegan faces this alone. And thank you Supervisor Montgomery Step for your leadership.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
So what Monica didn't mention, what this board usually does, they want to tax the corporations more so that they can implement programs to help the poor. Well, a little trickles down to the poor. People need to see these videos. They should be required to even graduate from junior high school, middle school. See Wealth Inequality in America? See this? These are YouTube video titles. This is a graph of what people, the actual wealth distribution, what people think it is, and the ideal, 9 out of 10 Democrats and Republicans want. And here's the problem. We had a graph where the poor, the elite, and the average person were moving together from World War II up to 1980. Suddenly, at 1980, the CEOs instead making about 25 times as much as their average worker, not their poor worker, their average worker, now are making 400 times as much. And it should go directly to the people. The wealth inequality, not to a program or through anything, interact.
Thank you. So next speaker's coming forward. I'll invite the remaining speakers in person. Erin Suramoto-Grossi, Patricia Mondragon, and Janika Faulkner.
Natalie Raschke. I appreciate you saying what we need to address. We should have a safety net for people, and it's a bit contradictory when you talk about Band-Aids or blaming federal government and getting the root to the problem. How about 1904? We've been redlining, it's all come to a head. Redlining, breaking treaties, now here we are. And even though maybe you didn't create those problems, we're here to have to deal with them. So to gaslight the public, like we're dependent on something? This goes way back. How do you break that cycle? Well, we have to recognize it first. It's not just Reagan, it goes further back than Reagan. I'm from the Muskogee Creek Nation, one of the first five civilized tribes, still.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Erin Suramoto-Grossi, Associate Director at Alliance San Diego. We are in strong support. We want to thank Vice Chair Monica Montgomery Step for her leadership in bringing this item forward.[1800.63] Many of our community members are already struggling, and this will only exacerbate the situation as people begin to lose key medical benefits and other programs that they rely on to survive. Local nonprofits will not be able to fill these gaps. While we know it is not the fault of the county that we're going to lose this funding, the county will still be left to fill in the gaps, as we have seen time and time again. This proposal is forward-thinking and will help the county take proactive steps to be able to help the thousands of San Diegans who are going to lose key benefits that they rely on to survive. We urge the board to support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, or good afternoon. How come you mute the moa? My name is Janika, Civic Engagement Coordinator at Alliance San Diego. We want to thank Vice Chair Monica Montgomery Step for bringing this item forward. We know that when HR1 goes into effect, it will impact thousands of San Diegans. People lose medical coverage and other key benefits they rely on to survive. This is truly a matter of life or death. While we know this is not the county's fault, this will fall on the county's shoulders. This proposal is solution-based and will help the county take proactive steps to be able to help the thousands of San Diegans who will be impacted by the loss of federal funding for benefits. We urge the board to support this proposal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Patricia Mondragon, Alliance San Diego. Thank you Supervisor Montgomery Step and Supervisors Aguirre and Lawson-Reimer for advancing policy today to support all San Diegans. We are in strong support of this item to explore partnerships and establish a Safety Net Bridge Program. As more residents face disenrollment from vital benefit programs, we need a true safety net that ensures no one is left without care, food, or other essential services. Collocating no-cost primary care with other social services such as the Live Well Center is a smart, compassionate, and community-centered approach. This is what it looks like to center dignity, health, and access in county policy. Please support this effort to do something right now to build a more equitable safety net for all San Diegans. Thank you, and please vote yes.
Thank you. Final call for Mohammed Umar and Cesar Javier. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. Again, when it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We will start with our first caller.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. This is Zeke Sandoval with PATH. While Congress and the President wrangle over this continued government shutdown, people are struggling. It's only going to get worse as families and individuals all across the country realize they will not be receiving their SNAP benefits for the foreseeable future. We really appreciate Supervisor Montgomery Step pushing forward this innovative proposal, seeking to address both the SNAP issue as well as the Medi-Cal cuts facing our community. It's not just the people that PATH serves every day who are made more vulnerable to these cuts. There are so many people on the cusp of homelessness who would be pushed onto the streets without some additional support from both the state and local level. So, urge the board to move as quickly as possible on the hunger aspects of this plan especially, since there's still no telling how long the shutdown will go. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Oh, here. So, okay, so the Safety Net Bridge Program. Yet another example of the same story. Reliance, reliance, reliance. Every new program, every gap-filling initiative, every Band-Aid is just another way to keep people dependent on the system, not empowered to solve their own problems or gain true freedom. We've seen it for decades. Government solutions create compliance, not independence. And yet, the same voices come in year after year, begging this board to continue programs that in reality perpetuate suppression. Don't you see it? Every handout that doesn't teach self-reliance, every temporary fix, every Band-Aid keeps us trapped and divided. True progress is not in more dependency, it's in education, empowerment, and giving people the tools to reclaim their sovereignty. Until we do that, we're simply patching wounds that never-
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Oh, bold. You should have done a safety net months ago when you began your budget tampering. Recommendation items like expanded metal cold training or food in cold storage could and should have been done years ago. Some of these things like pursuing grant opportunities or expanding partnerships on food security are already being done. But the best thing is good jobs and growing your own food. And I didn't know why you need an analysis, people who have lost benefits or been discredited from applying. New recommendation 3B. If someone needs services and you can show they're, they qualify, they deserve them. Reallocation of funding needs to mandate retaining inadequate reserve for emergency services. Both of these topics are good, but are presented-
Thank you. Next caller.
It's true for increased barriers. Communist Manuela Blaine Reagan, who was president four decades ago, for current bad California policies. She then called a veteran who served this country Jim Desmond Privilege. That's the second time she's attacked a veteran. Unlike Jim, what have you ever done to help anyone besides yourself? He'd ask Lingo about barriers to solstice where for translated is the current admin expects able-bodied adults to get a job. I know Manuela hates the thought of real work. The admin also expects those who entered our country illegally to get the heck out. Hearing Kristi Noem ads telling illegals they will be deported blasting in Imperial Beach is a welcome change. There needs to be barriers to access our tax dollars and services reserved for those citizens who actually need them, not a free-for-all. Why isn't there a county contingency plan already in place? Is this a county that doesn't prepare for emergencies? How is that possible when literally everything is declared a crisis? How come every Californian official sells to make life more affordable so nobody even needs these programs? Is this board in the business of creating a system of dependence and an abusive slave master-
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon. This is Bob Koenensky, the CEO at Feeding San Diego. I'm speaking directly to item two of the recommendations, food security measures that can be enhanced. At Feeding San Diego, we demonstrate the viability of food recovery programs from grocers, farms, and food processors in the county with proven processes and logistics models. Last year, we diverted over 18 million pounds into the food distribution network. Food recovery is practical, proven, and effective. Scaling the food recovery model can be accomplished as part of the Food Justice Community Action Plan. FSD fully supports item two of the Safety Net Bridge Program recommendation.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon. My name is Karina Pugh. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm speaking in support of this item on behalf of the San Diego LGBT Community Center. As a community center, we serve a large and diverse population, many of whom are being affected right now by the implications of HR1 and the government shutdown. Disproportionately, these folks who are being affected are low-income immigrants, people of color, and LGBTQ+ folks, particularly our transgender and non-binary community. Thousands in our community are struggling. Their access to healthcare is being attacked, their access to SNAP benefits and other food supports is now inaccessible, and all while the cost of living continues to rise. Our communities are in turmoil, and our county leaders must step up and meet the moment that we are in. This item will allow the county to explore options to increase the capacities and accessibility of resources that already exist in order to serve and support the growing number of folks that will rely on your support to make it through the month. Our community organizations cannot do this alone. Please vote in favor of this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Noah Yiyik. I am a researcher and policy advocate with the Center on Policy Initiatives and a convener of the Community Budget Alliance. We urge you to vote yes on item 12. This program is a safety system that will support San Diegans who lose access to food or healthcare benefits because of state or federal policy shifts. Healthcare and food are human rights, things people need to survive, to care for their families, and to live with dignity. Yet, right now, thousands of San Diegans are at risk of losing both. The federal administration is choosing to let people starve and remove access to care when they are sick, while they spend hundreds of millions terrorizing our communities, kidnapping our neighbors, and building a new ballroom. This is more than a policy failure. It is a moral one and an act of violence. The question before us is simple. Where does our county stand? Will we allow cruel decisions in Washington to harm San Diegans? Or will we step up to protect our neighbors? The Safety Net Bridge Program is how we live our values. It says that in San Diego County, no one should go hungry, no one should go without care, and we take care of each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Hello. My name is Jesus Martin Gallegos Muñoz, Community Organizing Coordinator at the Chicano Federation of San Diego County and resident of District 1. Food and healthcare are human rights that every San Diegan deserves access to. The federal administration is putting thousands of San Diegans' lives at risk by cutting safety net services like HealthFresh and Medi-Cal. The Safety Net Bridge Program will make sure families don't go hungry or without care when the federal administration fails them. Our county has the moral and ethical obligation to protect those citizens. On behalf of the Chicano Federation of San Diego County, I urge you to vote in favor of item 12. Best, yeah.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the final caller.
Clear that that Board of Supervisors does not have to listen to the public, and apparently they don't have to listen to the federal government. I'm asking you, Jim, if you could get a full audit of where are all these benefits are coming, are going to, and you determine if they're citizens or new migrants. Give that data to Donald, to the federal government so that we could remove the people that are receiving these benefits that should not be receiving these benefits. Kick their assets out of this fucking country because they're making all our citizens' lives to, you're pricing us out. And I don't fucking like it. I don't like the fact that your children can't go, your children's friends can't live here, they're moving out. You should feel really bad about that, and I'm really hoping that you get a full audit and send that over because California does not want to go ahead and listen to the public or the federal government. They are-
We have one in-person speaker that I missed when I did the second call. I'd like to invite for Dale McKenney. Apologies for missing your name.
Hello. It's okay. You don't have to feel bad. Good afternoon. My name's Dale McKenney. I'm a member of Youth Will, and I'm a resident of Paloma Guirres District. And I'm here to speak today in favor of establishing the Safety Net Bridge Program, which would ensure tens of thousands of people in the county would have access to basic needs, which I firmly believe is a responsibility of every elected official, to make sure that as many people are taken care of as possible. While none of us in this chamber have the ability to influence what goes on federally, we do have the power to make tangible improvements in the lives of the people who live in our communities. I urge every council, every county supervisor to vote yes. And I do just want to say, I like migrants. I think that last guy needs to like chill out. I hope everyone has a good day.
Thank you. Chair Lawson-Reimer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Thank you all very much. We now have some members of my, of my board who I would like to make some comments, beginning with Vice Chair Montgomery Step.
Chair, I just want to move the recommendations within the item and just make sure, make myself available for any questions that my colleagues have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, or Madam Chair. Appreciate it. I can't support the item today. This is just going to be another reason that we need more funding, and it's going to be used as a justification for another tax increase. You know, the people poised to lose benefits are being greatly over-exaggerated. Under HR1, primarily the able-bodied adults without dependents who are not working or volunteering at least 20 hours a week or enrolled in school, those are the ones that potentially losing benefits. So, it's that population, able-bodied people who won't work or volunteer while receiving benefits. And this is for single adults. This isn't for somebody with kids. This is for able-bodied adults. The proposed, proposal builds upon another bureaucracy with no identified funding sources. I realize it's a study, but counties are already stretched managing Medi-Cal, CalFresh, and homelessness programs. And this is adding another layer, and it diverts resources away from public safety and infrastructure, which is government's number-one job. And government just can't spend its way out of a problem. Every free program costs money, costs to taxpayers. And we should be focusing on keeping and ensuring that those eligible, those that need, those who aren't able to work, those with children, the elderly, those that cannot work 20 hours a week, that they do receive their benefits. But we shouldn't become the medical service provider either, as proposed today. We've seen how effectively our local food banks are and how they've been able to stand up for people and serving people in need. We should support them and not duplicate their efforts at county offices. Again, these proposed cuts are focused on those who can work or volunteer and choose not to. I think this item is unnecessarily for those reasons. I won't be voting for it. Thank you.
Did you want to respond directly?
Yes, yes. Supervisor, not that you asked for a response, but I just want to make sure that we are clear, very clear on this item and correct the record, because I won't allow this item to be hijacked by rhetoric. So, public safety and infrastructure, yes, of course, as a local government, especially for the unincorporated areas, that is our primary responsibility. But our responsibility, our primary responsibility to the region is the region's public health agency. That is very clear by realignment from the state of California and very clear by our mandate. And that is what this board letter does. I'm fine if you disagree with it, but I have to correct the record. As far as eligibility, if you look on recommendation 3B, what we are wanting to do here is provide a safety net for not only individuals who have lost public benefits, but also individuals who would have qualified for benefits but have not applied based on HR1 implementation or have been kicked out of the system because of the overburdenous requirements of HR1. And so, as I said in my opening statement, we have seen what this does to people who are actually eligible, the people that you are talking about as well, that I know that you care about, families, veterans, mothers, fathers, people who are working and still can't afford to feed their children. That is what this item, that is who this item proposes to help. In addition, in my role at the Workforce Partnership, I have talked to the Executive Director there. She is also willing to be a part of this conversation where people who have been kicked out of the system and need the 20 hours of volunteer service or work can also engage with the Workforce Partnership. And so, this is not any kind of handout or outside of our scope of the county. This is simply doing what we need to do. If you recall, because you supported this, we spent $30 million to help flood victims, you know, because that was a very reactive measure. What we're trying to do with this is plan. I think that is why people elected us, to plan. We see this coming, you know, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to plan. So, I just totally understand if you're not voting for it, you have the right to do that and represent your constituents. But I cannot sit here and allow this, this one in particular to be used with the rhetoric, because it really was, the intention is to help as many people as possible. I believe you have a Live Well Center in your district. It's to help as many people as possible, and I did not lean into the rhetoric around the federal government. It's factual stating what HR1 is going to do. So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Chair Porter McGarry. Thank you. And thank you, Vice Chair, for your leadership on this important work and for being you. I really appreciate your comments. I look forward to reviewing the analysis and taking action to deliver real results for our communities, because access to care should not depend on your ZIP code or the balance of your bank account. By partnering with health centers and volunteer clinicians, we can expand access to care where people live, work, and seek support. We know health doesn't start and end in the clinic. True healthcare- As far as eligibility, if you look on Recommendation 3B, what we are wanting to do here is provide a safety net for not only individuals who have lost public benefits, but also individuals who would have qualified for benefits but have not applied based on HR-1 implementation or have been kicked out of the system because of the overburdenous requirements of HR-1. And so, as I said in my opening statement, we have seen what this does to people who are actually eligible, the people that you are talking about as well, that I know that you care about, families, veterans, mothers, fathers, people who are working and still can't afford to feed their children. That is what this item, that is who this item proposes to help. In addition, in my role at the Workforce Partnership, I have talked to the Executive Director there. She is also willing to be a part of this conversation, where people who have been kicked out of the system and need the 20 hours of volunteer service or work can also engage with the Workforce Partnership. And so, this is not any kind of handout or outside of our scope of the county. This is simply doing what we need to do. If you recall, because you supported this, we spent $30 million to help flood victims, you know, because that was a very reactive measure. What we're trying to do with this is plan. I think that is why people elected us, to plan. We see this coming, you know, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to plan. So, I just totally understand if you're not voting for it, you have the right to do that and represent your constituents. But I cannot sit here and allow this one in particular to be used with the rhetoric, because it really was, the intention is to help as many people as possible. I believe you have a Live Well Center in your district. It's to help as many people as possible, and I did not lean into the rhetoric around the federal government. It's factual stating what HR-1 is going to do. So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Chair Porta Magiri. Thank you. And thank you, Vice Chair, for your leadership on this important work and for being you. I really appreciate your comments. I look forward to reviewing the analysis and taking action to deliver real results for our communities, because access to care should not depend on your ZIP code or the balance of your bank account. By partnering with health centers and volunteer clinicians, we can expand access to care where people live, work, and seek support. We know health doesn't start and end in the clinic. True healthcare is holistic and involves meeting the individual's social needs of all people. Health disparities don't happen by accident. They are the result of systems that have long failed to serve everyone equally. Inequities in income, race, geography, and access continue to shape who gets care and who gets left behind. These initiatives, this initiative helps close the gaps by centering care in underserved neighborhoods. And yes, when Washington turns its back on vulnerable communities, we have to stand up and respond and plan. So, in San Diego County, we are choosing to lead with values. We're choosing care over cruelty, and we're proving that when government shows up with courage and compassion, lives change and communities can thrive. So, thank you again, Vice Chair, for your leadership on this item, and I'm happy to second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anyone else like to make any comments? Okay, go to the vote.
Chair Lawson-Reimer, that motion passes with Supervisor Desmond voting no, all other supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you all very much. So, we'll now break for lunch. When we return, we will continue with Item 13. We'll come back at 1:15. Okay, thank you.